Okay, you ready then?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Good to see you on beautiful, beautiful spring day and hope for a good day today. So we're a little excited to get started. A few technical difficulties, but we're still going to have a good day. So first thing on, I guess I need to call it to order, Donna. First thing on our agenda is the moment of silence. And I don't know about all of you, but I have really appreciated the time that Charisse Dean has given us to just gather our thoughts, to think about what we're doing and why we're here each day. And I just hope that's something that we'll be able to continue in the future. So if you will, join with me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. As far as I know, we have one change to the agenda that we need to make. We need to add the nominating committee for next year's chair and vice chair. And Ms. Dean has said that she would be willing to serve on the committee. And she asked if Ms. McFetrich and Dr. Hill would also serve on the nominating committee. So would you two be willing to serve on the nominating committee?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
At this point, you're just adding to the agenda.
Okay, see, I've already messed up. Okay. So that's why Lori is here. So all we need to do is add the item to the agenda at the end of the, and we'll take care of it in new business. Okay. So I need a motion to add that to the agenda during new business.
So.
Okay. Mr. Sutton and then second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you. Hopefully, I won't have any more mess ups today, but don't be surprised if it happens. Okay. Our next order of business is we have some recognitions this morning, so I'm very thrilled about this. The first one is Mr. Cármenar, the month of the military child.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Secretary Key, ladies and gentlemen. Far be it from me to try to come in here and remind you of Arkansas's long and proud military heritage. Arkansas has given her sons and daughters to serve in our nation's wars since even before we had achieved statehood. And as we meet here today, over 14,000 Arkansans are serving in various branches and components of the United States Armed Forces. It's easy to remember their sacrifices, but easy to forget the sacrifices made by their families, and in particular, the 5,000 children of military families from Arkansas. And so on behalf of the Arkansas State Council of the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, I respectfully ask for the board to approve the resolution in your packets in honor of children of military families, recognizing April as month of the military child, and designating April 16th as Purple Up Day, when we will all wear our best joint services purple in honor of children of military families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you like to read the?
The Arkansas State Board of Education Resolution, whereas more than 14,000 Arkansans exhibit profound courage and selflessness by serving in the armed forces, and whereas more than 5,200 military children attend public school in the state of Arkansas, and whereas military families live and work in every county in the state of Arkansas, and whereas military children face unique challenges related to military transitions and parental deployment, and whereas military children and their families serve as an essential source of support and encouragement for armed service members, and whereas military children should be acknowledged for the sacrifices they make and celebrated for the courage they display as the children of our nation's armed service members, and whereas the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, of which Arkansas is a proud member, the Department of Defense, and various other organizations nationwide recognize April as month of the military child, now therefore be it resolved that the Arkansas State Board of Education recognizes and salutes military children by recognizing the month of April 2021 as the month of the military child and April 16th, 2021, as Purple Up Day.
Yes, thank you. We want to be sure and honor them because not only does the person that's in the service serve, but the whole family serves, and we want to show our deepest appreciation for them. So thank you. Do we need a motion to, okay, need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Ms. Woods?
Second.
And second by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary.
All right. Our next item is recognition of the United States Senate Youth Program. Ms. Horn, Ms. Starkey.
Good morning, Melissa Starkey, Learning Services. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. The United States Senate Youth Program was created by Senate Resolution 324 in 1962 in order to increase young Americans' understanding of the interrelationships of the three branches of government, learn the caliber and responsibilities of federally elected and appointed officials, and emphasize the vital importance of democratic decision-making, not only for America, but for people around the world. The application process is rigorous. Student applications and essays are scored by a committee of 12 to 15 people from here at the division. Eight students were chosen as semifinalists and interviewed with a panel of judges also from the division. Students must also complete the U.S. Senate Youth Public Affairs and History exam. The two students with the highest scores out of all of these rounds become our two Arkansas delegates. Each year, this extremely competitive, merit-based program brings 104 of the most outstanding high school students, two from each state, the District of Columbia and the Department of Defense Education Activity, to Washington, D.C. for an intensive week-long study of the federal government and the people who lead it. This year, the program was virtual, but if anyone can make a virtual program, awesome. The Hearst Foundation with U.S. Senate Youth can. The Hearst Foundation provides each student with a $10,000 undergraduate college scholarship with encouragement to continue coursework in government, history, and public affairs. This year, our Arkansas delegates were Anna Dean and Jax Nally. Anna is an AP Scholar, Debate Captain, Vice President of National Honor Society, President of Model United Nations, and founder and president of her school's National Teenage Republicans. She is Chair of both John Bozeman's Senate Youth Cabinet and the Mayor's Youth Council. Her volunteerism includes founding a nonprofit, Loud Women Incorporated, which offers debate initiatives and education equity programs. She is also founder and CEO of the Youth Debate Forum to expand debate education to students in grades five through eight. Anna plans to study government, public policy, and gender studies, and attend law school with the goal of one day becoming president. Jax is Senior Class Vice President, Arkansas DECA Vice President of Career Development, and founding Executive Director of the Springdale Student Forum, which provides students a way to share concerns with district leadership. Jax has received the Arkansas Seal of Biliteracy with certification in Spanish, French, and German. He's an AP Scholar and National Merit semifinalist. Volunteer activities include serving as a bilingual legal volunteer for Arkansas United, helping families apply for citizenship, DACA, and translating legal documents for applications. Jax plans to pursue a degree in political science with the goal of becoming an educational attorney. And honestly, after reading their applications and going through this process, that's just a summary of what all these students have done. And so I'm really excited that they're on Zoom today with us, and I'd like for them to share out about their experience at Washington Week because that was March 14 through 18. So if we could start with Anna Dean to give a few minutes about what she experienced, and then we'll go to Jax.
Okay, hey, everyone. So my name is Anna, and so I just kind of wanted to give a little of the highlights from my Washington Week experience. So first off, the experience where there was a bunch of different speakers and all of the delegates, we got to ask them questions. And so kind of getting to speak with these amazing speakers, I learned a lot. And so I just kind of wanted to highlight some of my experiences with those speakers. So first off, I got to talk to Circuit Judge Robert Henry from the state of Oklahoma. And so some of the insights he brought were really interesting. And so he talked about how the judiciary should look like the society it's adjudicating. And I just thought that was really interesting of him being from Oklahoma and talking about diversity and that kind of issues within the current judiciary system. Additionally, he talked about how his, kind of his ideals in relation to bipartisan cooperation and that kind of experience within the state of Oklahoma. And I just found that really energizing and just everything he had to say about bipartisanship work, not only in the judiciary, but in the legislative branch, and kind of on a smaller micro level within the state of Oklahoma. And then another speaker I wanted to talk about is CBS Evening News host Nora O'Donnell. She was amazing, and I'm a big fan, so it was awesome to get to learn from her. And so I appreciated her insight, just kind of talking about journalism and her experience with journalism. And she talked a lot about how kind of the media and journalism today is really the very foundation that make democracy work, and democratic values are all upheld by the ideas of media and journalism. And I found that really amazing, especially during this time when it seems that all we do is criticize the media and talk about the issues within the media. And I just found that really energizing, talking about the power of democracy within the media and journalists. And then another person who was really interesting to speak with was the first female U.S. Senate historian. So she talked about how she really, first off, was paving the way. She was the first female U.S. Senate historian, and so kind of paving the way as a woman in a male-dominated field. I found that really interesting, kind of her experiences throughout her time studying the history of the Senate. But she also talked about the ideas of kind of revisionist history and how history changes and forms. And so I just really value what she had to say about history in itself and how it can change, and we can interpret things differently as time goes on. And then another thing is she talked about kind of changing ideas and changing ideas in relation to the filibuster and what the filibuster looks like in the Senate in the status quo compared to a couple years ago or even previous administrations. And so that was really interesting, just kind of hearing firsthand experience about the issues with the filibuster, especially what's currently happening right now with the filibuster. And then another person who was really amazing to get to learn from was Dr. Anthony Fauci. And so we got to ask him questions, and he talked about kind of the issues with the current media's rhetoric and the rhetoric and kind of hyperpolarization of COVID-19 protocols and things like that. And so getting to actually be able to ask questions and learn from Dr. Fauci was amazing. And then just another thing I wanted to highlight about the program is the military mentor groups. And so we got put in small groups with military mentors, and we kind of got to talk about and kind of reflect every single day throughout that week on different issues. And so I got to talk with these passionate young people from so many different states that have so many different lived experiences from my own, being in Arkansas. And so I got to talk about issues with Native Hawaiians that they're currently facing through COVID-19. And I learned so much really just from getting to talk to my fellow delegates from states like Hawaii. And then additionally, I got to talk about issues of labor unions in the Midwest and kind of hearing firsthand from people in Minnesota about their experience and kind of what their community is dealing with, and then kind of also getting to talk about the issues Arkansas is currently facing. That was really awesome, and I learned a lot just from the kind of dialogue and rhetoric from my fellow peers. And then another thing that I think I really left the experience with is just kind of the power and beauty of bipartisanship. I think kind of right now, looking at the political spectrum, we're so divided, yet getting to talk to these young people and really, you know, we disagree on a lot of things, but being able to talk about that and collaborate on these such big issues was amazing and kind of getting to do that in a small form with my military mentor who served in the Air Force was an amazing experience. And I think everyone in the Board of Education, it was a great experience, and it really did change my life. So thank you. Jax?
We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for having us here. USSYP was an amazing experience. I apologize, I just had to go get my dog. He started barking during the last few minutes, and so I wanted to make sure that he wasn't making an appearance during my, while I was talking. Anyway, yeah, I think just like Anna, the most impactful part of this experience was getting to talk with leaders at the national level, you know, people that we look at and we really put on a pedestal and we take them sort of outside this human dimension. And they're in the media, and, you know, we see them in this official capacity. And then this, you know, a few weeks ago, I was seeing them in their living room, and they were talking to me on Zoom. And, you know, they're having the same problems with their dogs too. And, you know, that was just a really unique thing to get to see. I think it really brought the government down to scale, and it really brought sort of this idea of democracy that anybody can be involved really to life for me. It made it seem like the government was accessible, like my own dreams of working in policy were something that I could one day achieve. I'll just share a few of the things that I learned as well, like Anna did. One of the things I thought was really impactful was when President Biden made an appearance and spoke to us. He talked about unity and how we can always question another person's judgment, but we should never question their motives or their values, and how he really defines unity in that way. And I thought that that was a really, you know, unique perspective, you know, simple perhaps, but something that we really need to focus on in this day and age is, you know, calling out each other's judgment when we think that someone else is wrong, or maybe that their ideas are harmful, you know, but never losing that sense of who we are and that we're fighting for the same, you know, causes at the end of the day. Also, it was so cool to get to talk to Senators James Langford and Tammy Baldwin. Senator Langford, he talked to us about the importance of keeping your faith in public service and how, you know, you have to maintain a sense of, you know, right and wrong in what you're doing and how that can be difficult sometimes. And I thought that was a really personal message and something that really resonated with me. And then with Senator Tammy Baldwin, I actually had the opportunity to ask her a question. And I said, you know, Senator, if you had three wishes from a genie, what would you do to fix the world? And then a few minutes later, she was telling me about her upbringing in Wisconsin and, you know, how the issues of medical care were really important to her and how her pre-existing conditions blocked her from getting medical care as a child and drove her grandparents into debt. And then soon enough, she was telling me about baby bonds, her plan to, you know, create a system where children can have, you know, expendable income by the time that they're 25. And I thought that was really unique. I also got to speak with Justice Clarence Thomas, and I thought it was so cool that I got to ask him a question. You know, I said, Justice Thomas, you had this ruling in 2010 about the Affordable Care Act, and you were one of the main dissenters. Would you please, you know, tell me a little bit more about your opinion? And, you know, he's just talking to me as if we're in the same room, you know, giving me his opinion. And that's just something that I think is a once-in-a-lifetime experience to get to have that sort of access to those figures, you know, but also it just showed me where I can go in the future. We talked to Noah Harris, who right now is the Harvard Student Body President. He was a USSYP alum, and he talked to us about the importance of, you know, believing in yourself, about building community, about reaching out and listening to the story of stories of other people. And I thought that was something that was just so impactful. So I'm so grateful for this opportunity. It was an amazing time, and I won't forget it.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you. So we are incredibly proud of Anna and Jax and wish them well in their future endeavors. Congratulations again to the two of y'all, and thank you again to the board for this opportunity to recognize our outstanding students. Thank you.
Congratulations, Anna and Jax. I'm very confident that one day I'll see both of your names on a ballot somewhere. So congratulations, y'all are outstanding young people, and we're very, very proud of you. Our next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have something you want to pull or discuss on the consent agenda? Okay, I don't believe we have any, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Sutton?
Second.
Second, Ms. McFetrich. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion approved. Move on to our action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is a review from the Ethics Committee. Ms. Douglas.
I'm going to get that one off.
Okay.
Good morning, Lori Freeno, Arkansas Department of Education. This is an appeal of a PLSB Ethics Hearing Subcommittee's recommendation that Ms. Tiffany Gant, who is a non-licensed teacher teaching under an Act 1240 waiver, be issued a sanction of what is called a Level 4 Public Notification of Ethics Violation, which is the equivalent, if she would be licensed, of a, would be a revocation. Ms. Gant is here, as is her attorney, James Valley, and the PLSB today is represented by Amy Douglas. And Ms. Newton, may I go through the proceedings?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Gant or Mr. Valley or both may make an opening statement, a statement of up to 10 minutes, and Ms. Douglas will then likewise have 10 minutes to make a statement. The chair may grant additional time to any party. At any time during the proceedings, the board may ask questions to the educator, to the PLSB investigator, or to either attorney. Any testimony that is given by a non-attorney must be given under oath. Following the hearing, the board is going to need to make three decisions. And the first is going to be findings of fact. And in other words, that means you will need to determine whether you agree with the hearing Subcommittee's decision concerning what the facts of the case were. Second, if you agree with these facts underlying the decision, you must determine whether, based upon those facts, you feel that Ms. Gant violated Standard 1, Standard 2, or both of the Code of Ethics for Arkansas Educators, which is what the Ethics Subcommittee hearing found. And third, if you determine that Ms. Gant violated Standard 1, Standard 2, or both, then you must decide whether you agree with the sanction that was imposed in this case. Again, the sanction was a Level 4 Public Notification of Ethics Violation, which would be the equivalent of a revocation for a licensed educator. If you do not agree with the sanction, you may modify it. And Ms. Newton, it would be best if this, these decisions would be made in three parts, if there would be three individual votes on this.
Okay.
And unless there are other questions, I would turn the floor over to Ms. Gant and Mr. Valley.
Okay, do I need to swear anyone in this morning?
Mr. Valley, will Ms. Gant be testifying?
I don't know. Who is wearing?
Okay. Okay. Would you, would you stand up and raise your right hand, please, ma'am?
I'll stand here somewhere, I think.
Ms. Newton.
You need to come to the microphone, is what he's saying.
Senator, can you hear me?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to be here, and I say that in all candor. Before I get started, I want to thank you for rescheduling this matter to this day. Last month, I had a criminal case in Hernando County which interfered with it, and before that, we had snow and ice on around and other things that delayed it. And so I appreciate that on my behalf as well as my clients. Today, we are here appealing the decision that was made by the board that essentially ratified the first group and giving Ms. Gant what I call the death penalty. Nobody else has referred to it as that, but basically this would prohibit her from ever teaching again in Arkansas and at least 32 other states. And I think that's drastic, and of course, the way you assess these cases is it would be that you make a finding of fact, and then you come to what you do with those findings of fact. But your finding of facts may box you into a conclusion that I say is not right, not fair, probably not proper. And what I mean by that, what we have here is two males at, in Helena West Town, Arkansas, who inbounded Ms. Gant, in essence, inappropriate messages. And her responses to them were no and maybe later, something of that sort, which could have been handled differently. But that's where this stops, is at the communication between Ms. Gant and those two males who are, if my memory serves me right, they're parents in their own right, they have their own children. These allegations of misconduct, let's say that it's grounded somehow and that there should be some punishment, it just baffles me that an educator or a lawyer or certified public accountant or anybody else could be permanently barred from working in the profession for something that is not a crime and wouldn't get them convicted of a crime even amidst a man. And I've argued that somewhat in the brief that I filed with you, and I won't necessarily read that to you, but the point is that the way this has been set up that allows you to get to this Level 4 Public Notification, which ends up with being a permanent bar to teaching, is like killing a gnat with a slur channel. That's the way I see it, the best, basic way to explain it. But let me give you a little bit more meat to this matter. We had this allegation. At the hearing, I asked the principal, who was Ernest Simpson, basically why he made the allegation through this Ethics Review Board. And he, he in essence testified that he was directed to make the allegation. And what I've learned in this case is that not all ethics complaints or not all ethical violations or ethical conduct that may be questionable is even reported to anybody. It doesn't even necessarily go anywhere, it stays local. This amounts to Ms. Gant getting caught in a fight between the Simpson, who was the principal, Simpson, who was on the school board, who was the dad of the principal, and her stepdad, who was Bagley, who was the board president at one point, who was suing the school district because he applied for a job and was not hired for that job. And then he was a journalist, and still is a journalist, with the local newspaper, and he wrote articles about the school district that were not flatterable. Let's just say that. Best I can tell, they didn't violate any rules, there was no defamation or any of that, basically it's the truth, but it was unflattering on the school district. And so you got this internal fight going between these other people, and Ms. Gant here is caught up in the midst of that. And so she goes to the library to do something, lesson plan or what have you on the school district computer. And she had made the error of using Google, and Google allows you to do this password thing where if you sign in on Google, your other passwords are preserved, and you can log into Facebook or DILUTs or whatever else you use on the internet based on having logged in before, and Google remembering your passwords. And I'm going to say for the sake of this presentation that she failed to log out of Google, because I don't know exactly what happened. I got some questions, but let's say she failed to log out of Google. Then the person who didn't testify at the last hearing, has never given testimony, goes into the library, she says, doing some classroom reunion work, which of course you know is not educating children, doing some classroom reunion work for some class in the 1960s. And she said, I'll say I was being nosy, but she goes into Facebook, enters Ms. Gant's Facebook profile or whatever it is it's called, and then she didn't see anything immediately. She went through looking for what she could find. And she finds this dialogue that's become the issue here as between Gant and the two males. And reviewing those, those things, there's a lot I don't like about them, but I just say this, that those conversations were initiated by those males, and there was nothing of the sort of like grooming. When I heard about it in the media, I'd heard that a teacher at the high school had engaged in an improper sexual relationship with two boys. had engaged in an improper sexual relationship with two boys. But when I got the facts, it's not what happened. There's some, two boys making approaches to Gant, and Gant saying no, and at some point, she said some other things that should have been said, or should have been said differently. But that's, becomes the meetup, that's it. That's all of it. It was investigated by the Social Services on, whether it's DHS or Child Protective Services, I don't know all the names of those people. But they came out and did their investigation, found nothing. The Helena West Town Police Department, so it was kind of Shaft Department, came out and did their investigation, found nothing. Although they had cooperation from Gant, as well as everybody else that's involved in this. And so the essence of it is, the people who are angry, which is not the parent, not the actual guys who did these things, but it's Simpson, the principal, who makes this complaint. I think that's critical because what this complaint, what they're doing is using the State Board of Education to get back at someone that he couldn't get to otherwise. That's, that's the way I see it. And I, I say that to you, I say that to him, I stand on it, and I believe that. But also, I think there's some concern with the way the Board did the, the way the Board is boxed in on, if you make this finding, then you have to reach this conclusion. And again, that conclusion takes you to the death penalty. Now, the Board had made the finding, for example, that these were two male members of the general public, then they don't have to get a death penalty. If they made the finding that these are two male students, you give the death penalty. It doesn't define student as to connecting two Ms. Gant, it's just students. If we had a student at the high school, I would imagine. And I, while I understand the critical difference between the general public and, and the student population, these people were not students of Gant when this stuff happened, in terms of the communication. These were, in my words, maybe not yours, and I'm not politically correct, I just say what I think. These are just some managed boys who were seeking a good time with whomever they could get it with. Gant became the target, and she turned them away. What Simpson and the person who went into the Facebook thing said, she didn't turn them away soon enough, she didn't turn them away properly, she didn't tell us about it, or what have you. And so at the Board hearing, we had, the question was, well, perhaps, why didn't you tell them sooner about what had transpired? Why didn't you tell us that these guys were approaching you? And, and that goes into a whole nother thing. I don't necessarily want to get too deeply into it, but it goes into, I've been to you on other occasions, and it didn't work. It wasn't about this, but it's about a student who walked up and grabbed me by my buttocks. It's about a student, a, a parent who comes to my classroom, who's a substitute teacher, and cusses me out. And so what I'm saying is, and my time is up, and I'll just take about two seconds to, to wrap up, is that the conclusion here, that a person who's not violating any law can be permanently barred in Arkansas and 32 other states from ever teaching again, is, is, is not proper. And in the meantime, while she has been undergoing this, she's completed the APA program, she's passed the Praxis, and she's all ready to teach in Arkansas otherwise, that she wouldn't have been able to do if she wouldn't have made these efforts on her own. She was in the APA program sponsored by the school district, but the school district terminated, and so she completed this program on her own. I believe that somebody, you can check with to verify.
Can you stay with the microphone, please? Stay, stay at the microphone.
Stay at the microphone.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I was just, I was trying to hurry up because I was over my time. But she's completed the APA program, passed the Praxis, she's ready to be licensed, and all of that has happened since she was terminated by the Helena West Town School District. While unemployed, I think is what she said, over my shoulder. While unemployed. So I, I, I was, I waited, I hope you have some questions we'll be answering at that time.
All right, yes, I'm sure we will. Ms. Douglas?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You'll see a graphic on the screen. I just kind of want to remind you of the process. We have allegation received, it's validated, an investigation is authorized. It'll come back in a minute. A final report is issued, educator has time to respond, and then an original initial determination and recommendation is made. At that first level, the recommendation was Level 4 Public Notification of Ethics Violation. Then Ms. Gant rejected that and requested a hearing before the Board. And the hearing recommendation was also a Level 4 Public Notification. And so here we are today. So we've gone through all of that steps in our quite lengthy process. So I would say to Mr. Valley's remarks that it's undisputed that Ms. Gant violated the Code of Ethics. She even admitted in our hearing that she violated the Code of Ethics. I don't think that is up for debate. I think Mr. Valley's position is, I mean, what she did wasn't that bad. And so we should not bar her from teaching in the classroom. So, and I think even, he even referred to it as the death penalty in education. So, an ethical violation is an act or omission on the part of an educator when an educator knew or reasonably should have known that the act or omission was in violation. Whether the violations were reported, whether other violations in this district are reported always to the PLSB, no one knows. We can't, we're not here to argue that point. Whether those cases are even authorized, we can't say. None of that is up for debate here. And whether they feel like Ms. Gant was targeted by administration or what was going on in the county at the time is not relevant. It does not negate the messages. And the, the argument is like, well, they, they contacted her. So what? My argument to you is, so what? So you report it to your administration, you don't then engage in these inappropriate dialogue. So, and I'll refer you to the transcript. On page 77, Ms. Gant says, "I had poor judgment, and the messages are embarrassing. They're inappropriate." Page 78, "I think I allowed it to get out of hand on Facebook because it's not monitored, but the sexual windows and invitations were made by the students." So what? So then on 96, "So it's not your testimony that your communications with S1 and 2 were not sexual." And she says, "I think they were sexual. I think they were sexual in nature, and that's how I violated the social media policy." Page 98, "You're still my student until you graduate," student says. "But that's inside of school. Outside, it's a whole different story. Besides, I wouldn't want you to lose your job. That's why I said the school don't have to know." She replied, "Someone always finds out. What's a few months?" And sends an emoji with the hands in the air, kind of shoulder strike. And then she says, "I can tell you these messages. What bothers me the most is that last message that I sent to him, and I don't have a defense against that. I don't know why I sent that." She goes on to say things to students like, "Who else is going to be bold enough to step to their teacher besides a freak? Maybe you're not a freak, maybe you just like sex. Either way, we'll have fun figuring it out." And she says, in her testimony, "It's that message that bothers me the most." We have gone through the process. I understand Ms. Gant has been in the APA program. I don't know what the actual status of that, Ms. Seracene, you want to, to verify. Whether you're in the APA program, whether you're a banker, whether, whatever you're doing, it's not appropriate to, to message with teenagers. It's not appropriate to say things to 17 and 18-year-olds of the sexual nature. You are in a, you have a fiduciary duty to protect them. And so at this time, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time after questioning.
We'll see, we'll see if any members of the Board have questions. Dr. Hill?
The age of the boys, again, when, because when you said boys, because was I misunderstanding the age? Because at one time, you said, you referenced, it was just, it was just people in the community, but these were students. Because, yeah, because I, I, I'm confused by my interpretation of what I read. And then what you, what you were saying made me think they were, that they were just community people, but they were.
What I, what I was saying was, of course, I'm thinking these are 17, 18-year-old.
Students.
Yeah, I would guess so.
Okay, all right, all right.
They, they, I believe they were attending the Central High School at the time.
Okay, all right, that was, that was my question.
I said that, the distinction is that they were treated as general public. Same thing happened with the general public, as opposed to being considered a student. You don't have death penalty, you have a punishment.
Right.
But it's death penalty. And I was just distinguishing that.
Okay.
These were, they were parents, so it's not a grooming situation.
No, that was, they were parents.
Yeah.
Define that.
They had kids of their own.
The, the, the young men?
Right.
Okay, that's why I had, that's why I, okay. That's why you got them, okay. All right, okay. Thank you. Mr. Valley?
Ms. Chambers?
Could we ask to hear from Ms. Gant, or is that part of the?
Yes.
I would really appreciate, it sounds like there was an opportunity under other circumstances for you to report to administration things that needed to be attended to, and, and nothing was done, I think is what was alluded to. So could you speak to what you were thinking at the time, and why you didn't bring this forward in a more timely way to report the issues as, as they were unfolding?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for that question. Should I be cognizant of time? Or just, um, there have been other students, or other male students, all athletes, that have sent messages. And I was also, I was hired as the head volleyball coach. And so I directly report to an athletic director, and also my building principal, you know this, you're in education. And those were all reported to my athletic director because they were his athletes. And I'm not sure how those were handled. I know that none of those, those same students probably ever propositioned me again, but I don't believe that they were suspended. I don't know if there were any discipline. Sometimes coaches handle discipline on field. And that may not be in line with policy, but we have been given some liberty to discipline students that way. But I can tell you that the ones that were reported, they never came back and made any kind of proposition. With this specific situation, from the time the messages began with the sexual content, it was a week, it's like seven days. And at that time, I was the head volleyball coach. I was the only volleyball coach for four teams. So that's seven through 12. It was a program that, before, only had one team, which senior high team, but it grew in the three and a half years I was there. And I was handling a lot of responsibility with that. There was no other coach over volleyball. I was also in the APA program, which I'm not sure if anyone has ever gone through that program. Pretty strenuous. And then I was also teaching three classes. And one of those classes was an AP class, which was 25 students. And so there was a lot going on. And I'm not sure that I can tell you with the previous allegations, if I reported them and what, anyone would say what the timing mattered. But I did eventually get around to reporting them. And that week, I had three matches, and two of them were on the road. So that's that. But I have also approached the administration about my principal specifically, coming from the gym, and I was running late, which has happened before. And he was getting on to me about being late. And I said, "I would like to take the time to tell you about what I actually go through during the day." And he said, "That's not my concern." That was hurtful. But that came after being suspended and having to fight for my job after a parent verbally come into my classroom, which is illegal, verbally assaulted me, and nothing happened. Actually, she was subbing that week in, in one of my classes. And I was fighting for my job. She broke the law, and she assaulted me. And I'm fighting for my job. That made sense to no one in the community, maybe except for the persons who were doing it. But eventually, I got my job back because it just made no sense. That altercation happened two weeks after eight eighth graders surrounded me and assaulted me. It wasn't necessarily that I was physically harmed, but it was that an eighth grader grabbed my behind while eight were surrounding me. I, in a, it was not a brief document, but in very detailed write-up. I explained the situation. It's submitted to that same building principal, who later tells me it's none of his concern. And that's a suspendable offense. But that particular student had already had many offenses. So many might, some people might argue that she would have been expelled. I don't want any student expelled from school. I can't teach a student that's not in school. But she had a lot of offenses. I got to see her in school for the rest of the time I was there. And then the next year, she's, nothing happened to her. So where is it okay to put your hands on a teacher? To actually conspire, that sounds very damning, and I don't want to damn you, but... They conspired, because when she grabbed my behind, I said, one of the other students said, "You actually did it? What do you mean you actually did it? So you knew this was going to happen?" And as I replayed the events of that day, yeah, I was surrounded. And I was the only teacher in the gym with the athletics class of, I think, maybe, it was less than 20 students, but we met in the gym. And...
Ms. Gant, can we move back to, to this, this particular case that we are looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry. You asked about what was in my mind. I felt powerless. So I just felt like I had taken some measures, and I, I felt powerless. I actually, at that point, I'd just gotten my job back, and I didn't want to ruffle any feathers. I didn't want to, I didn't want to give the administration a reason, who'd already shown some animosity towards me because of what Mr. Valley's already explained. I just didn't want to give them any reason to have to terminate me again because surely I was not going to make it back from another. So that's, thank you for your question, and thank you for the accountability. Is there anything, or another question?
You have another question, okay. Ms. Wood?
I probably have a comment more than I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Valley, you mentioned that it was improper, that you found it improper, that she could be given the death penalty in education for something that wouldn't amount to a conviction at a legal standard. And to that, I would say, thank goodness, because we hold our teachers at a much higher, much higher bar. And so I think where I have a lot of issues with this is that even as a non-licensed teacher, you manifested extremely poor judgment in a situation. And so if we are to allow her to go back into the classroom, we have no indication that she will be able to manifest better judgment going forward. Would you like to speak to that? Yes, you may.
If you'll allow me, I agree with you on the poor judgment. At every point in this situation that Ms. Douglas has outlined, I've, I've never run away from, I've always owned my actions. And I'm not asking to be completely exonerated. I don't think I should be. I think there should be some punishment. Also, I'd say, unlicensed and untrained. I went from coaching for 15 years in Texas, but I'd never trained as a teacher. And there are some situations that you just, you don't know that you don't know. Not an excuse, still an adult, still children. And so as I stated before, I don't, especially the last thing I said to, I think, was Matthews. I have, I don't think there's a day that has gone by that I have not thought about that last message I sent. It was extremely poor, it was, it was inappropriate. That was a message that I saw on my son's phone, there would be some problems. Getting back to your, you said, what do, would you repeat the last part of your question?
I was, what I was getting at is that you, even as a non-licensed teacher...
Oh, yes, you asked what indication you have. At that time, I was not trained. I was starting the APA program. And I would say, just to commend the APA program, I've learned so much in that first, that summer one cohort that I understand, and I don't know if any of these people are in this room, why educate, experienced educators who have gone through higher-level education have a problem with waiver teachers. have a problem with waiver teachers. I get it, because there was so much I did not know, from five of, the difference between five oh four and, can't remember the other one. You know, sped, I've learned about that, but the, um, pro-ethica training, I can't, I have to admit that I was convicted going through that training. This is why they say I should have known better. I didn't, but this is why licensed teachers are a little bit apprehensive when a waiver teacher steps on their campus and is responsible for a hundred and six students. Um, the indication that I was better is, one, this has got to be the most uncomfortable experience I've ever had in my life. Three states saw a news story that basically said I was a pedophile. I went through a period of depression, I'm not gonna go into all that, but I don't wanna do that again. And then, I don't think there's any reason I should ever talk to students in that way. I was, I made myself too available. And I think that my relationship with them wanting to, be, coming from Dallas-Fort Worth, which is vastly different from Illinois-Tallahassee. Um, I wanted to be accepted, because you know, no student is gonna learn from you if they don't like you and they can't relate to you. And so, I think there was that going on, um, but I would never wanna revisit anything like this. And I've already started making measures to remove myself so that I'm not, I still think I'm a teacher and a coach by heart. If I lose my license in the state of Arkansas and other thirty-two states, somebody, somewhere is gonna hire me to teach or coach something, because that is what I believe that I'm here to do. I would love to do it in the public school system. Um, but I wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize that going forward. I, I enjoyed my job at Central, it was very hard, it's the hardest thing I've ever done. But I enjoyed it and I hate that I jeopardized it. I did. There's stuff was going on with my stepdad, yes, and that definitely did not help. In fact, he took some actions that really made it worse. But those are my statements, I said those statements. Unlicensed, untrained, but still a thirty-eight-year-old adult. I'm not gonna run from them so that I don't do it again. But I appreciate your question, so it gives me the opportunity to say that, um, I've learned from this situation and I would like the opportunity to teach children in state Arkansas and actually, to answer your question. Thank you.
Ms. Woods, do you have anything else? Okay. Dr. Moore? Ms. McFakers?
Ms. Gant, you've talked several times about being untrained. I'd be interested to hear what kind of ethical training did you have as you've gone through teaching and being in the classroom?
Um, before Apple, my ethical training was a thirty-minute video, I mean, I think it may be forty-five minute video that we have at the beginning of every year. And so, I was able to begin three years of teaching. So, forty-five minutes times three, that was my ethical training. But no, the first year, we had mentors, and I'm not sure why that program was ever done away with. But that is the, oh, that year, I grew so much, I had no problems. Um, Darla Gis was my mentor, and, I mean, she still mentors me now even through unemployment, you know, encourages me, and that was great, so that's something y'all ever think about redoing. But other than that, I had no ethical training as it related to teaching. And so, I mean, I used to bartend, this is gonna sound bad, but flirting was something we did. Not excuse for being in education. You should, I should have known to transition over. I did that for twenty years before I got into education. And so, I think that may have been part of it too, is just going back to what I was used to doing. But those, these are, these are children, this is some, these are, they ain't parents, parents themselves, but they're still some child. And so, um, I would, if I had had the training I have now, at that time, this would have never even happened. Those students would not even know I was on Facebook. I told the other name, you know, anytime they asked, I'm not on Facebook. That's what I also wanted to say, is in that area, there is trouble communicating with students and families. And so, we use social media. And that's something that my administration knew about. Um, the last year, I actually had gained some wisdom, and so there were other people that I would have monitored the accounts, uh, but not my personal accounts. And that's where this happens.
Can you tell us what training you've had then now?
Of the Apple program, Ann Crosser, and, uh, I can't even remember his name, but he's out of Pine Bluff. He was my instructor during the summer one cohort. Um, that and, you know, just general research and, but the Apple program, I've grown seven inches that I hate that I won't be able to use if I'm not eligible to, I mean, it's, wisdom doesn't go anywhere. I can use it in any industry. I would love it to, love to use it in the industry that gave it to me though. Um, but the pro-ethica video, I'm not sure how long it is. But the way that they give you situations, I mean, it's, they're detailed situations. And a few of those situations I have been in and wouldn't have thought to make the, or take the actions that were suggested. And some of that is because, you know, when you don't know, you look to others who do know. But the thing about it is, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you think that you can rely on them because they're veterans, but they may be veterans in doing the wrong thing for thirty years. So, I, I would, but my advice would be for any teacher going forward is to let the standards, the eight standards, go there first. If you have a question, go there first. Read the standards first. And then, if you have questions beyond that, go to somebody who you believe walking out those standards. I was asking people for advice that, and I have to say, I didn't know, I didn't know the standards. I didn't know the standards. I knew where to find them and I knew they were there, but I don't know them as intimately as I know them now, you know? Um, I know that the lady that was in my account broke the standards, she's not here. And I think it scares me that someone can get into one of my social media accounts that fast and not be held accountable for it. It scares me that two students could make advances to a teacher and not be held accountable for it. But if that teacher knows and is willing to stand firm on those standards, I also wouldn't be here. And so, I would encourage anyone that does not know the standards to know them. You have a question, go there first, and then, you know, look to a trusted advisor if you want to. Did I answer your question? I probably did more than that. Thank you.
Can I address this woman's question a little bit?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Douglas, in addition to a follow-up, because I don't know that you know her trajectory or history, but this, this young lady, of course, uh, attended schools in northwest Texas or whatever, Dallas, DeSoto. She went to Jackson State, and then she came back and went to school in northwest something down Texas. Then she came to Phillips County as a clerical person for the community college and the school district, which typically has trouble hiring teachers. And we're grateful for the waivers, or we'd be in trouble for not having qualified teachers. Of course, I taught in two thousand and five in Hollywood, Texas, because they didn't have an English teacher. And I was a custodian teaching my child. So, I went out there and taught, and then I became the mayor. But back to the point, her, her history is that she wasn't trained as a educator as I was. I, I passed whatever the test was back in, in the day. And so, for her to go through the Apple program without the school district's support is that she had applied herself, did what they required, uh, gotten some of the training that she would not have otherwise gotten. And so, she's not the same Ms. Gant as she was on the day that these things happened or when the school district took their action, or when any of the boards that have reviewed this took, took those actions. And at this point, if, uh, this decision is favorable to her in some way, other than death penalty, then she would be given a license to teach. Uh, and certainly, uh, we can talk about it, if the board is considering something other than death penalty, how we can fashion that in a way that assures that if she goes back into the classroom, this is not repeated. And I, I don't want, you, you, you mentioned that you're glad the standards were such that a person could be barred from teaching even though they're not convicted of a crime. And, and, and I understand that, but I'm, I'm not talking in the beyond the reasonable doubt standard of some felony. I'm talking about this wouldn't even be a misdemeanor, this wouldn't even be like a speeding ticket kinda thing. That's what I mean by a low level, uh, because criminal stuff is serious and it's a different measure than what you would have in, in, in this proceeding. But at the same time, I think justice and fairness, uh, pervades any hearing that you would have. And I just don't think necessarily that it's fair that a person who, the conduct or the messaging inappropriate, as it may, may have been, uh, that you permanently barred from a career in Arkansas and at least thirty-two other states for that, where you have had instances, uh, they haven't come to you, because I mean, you were taking action against those people, but you had instances where there's been actual physical contact, actual intercourse, actual baby's boy, uh, type thing. Uh, and so, this is not sad. And so, when, when Ms. Douglas says, "I'm saying so what?", I am saying so what in comparison to some of the greater things. I'm not saying so what that what she did, uh, or is okay, or shouldn't, should have happened. I'm not saying that by any measure. But I'm also saying that I've seen that she's gone and taken the efforts to rehabilitate herself.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sutton? Mr. Sutton, you have questions?
Not a question, but a, a comment to Mrs. Gant. I, um, I believe that you are remorseful. I believe that you, um, know that you, what you did was inappropriate. I don't think that you're a bad person and you shouldn't look at yourself as that. But we're charged with protecting the children of the state through the public school system. And you did cross the line. And that's difficult, it's difficult for all of us, particularly when we start putting faces and testimonies to, um, printed material. Um, I appreciate all of your comments, but, um, you have to understand our position too. May you ask a question? Sure?
I guess, I, I do understand, and I have to admit, I'm not sure I would want to be in your position, um, because I've given you a genuine account. Um, I guess my question, but I have been wondering since we've had this here, is, is what you see in front of you, do you believe that I'm a predator? Now, you think the state, that children would be better off if I was not, if I were no longer allowed to teach? I guess that's my question. And I know you have to think about, you know, precedents and what you've done before and, you know, staying consistent. But sometimes that consistency is, we keep doing the same thing, and we're not, are we actually making progress? Because we're still doing the same thing, you know? I was not someone wanting to teach, I wanted to coach. The same principal that terminated me called me four times, convinced me to teach. And he can tell you, I told him, I said, "No, I'm not gonna go in the classroom, I'm not trained." But I did it, and I don't feel bad for doing it. It was a decision I made knowing I wasn't trained.
Ms. Gant, I, I see Ms. Frino, I wanna make sure we're on track, doing what we-
But I did do it. And so, that's my question, is, is, will the state be better off? And the other thirty-two other states that I did research that would not give me a license, if you have primarily not renewed it. Are children better off because I'm not, no longer in their classrooms? Would be the question I would ask. And thank you for your comment.
Ms. Frino?
Thank you, Ms. Newton. It's not standard for, um, parties to ask questions to the state board. And in this situation, you know what the questions are that you have to decide, the facts, the sanction, and so forth. So, it's not like, I, I heard Ms. Gant at the beginning ask you if you thought she was a predator. I mean, that's not the issue here. You know, the issue is what is, was in the record that was presented to you, um, and, you know, based upon the record, how those three factors fit in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Frino. Mr. Lookeden? Any other member have another question?
I just, I wanted to follow up since you did give us a very candid recap. And just tell you, to, to partner on Mr. Sutton's comment, the position that we are in sets a precedent going forward, and I know you understand that. But we have three questions. Are the findings of fact accurate? And you admitted that they are. So, so that the easy answer is yes to number one. Number two, did you violate standards one and two? And you have admitted that you have. So, really, the question for this board today is, is this sanction that two other bodies have already come to the correct one?
That's your standard?
No, you're fine. So, Ms. Frino, do you wanna, did I recap that correctly? It's my understanding that decisions we have to find are, are the findings of fact accurate, yes or no?
Yes.
Determine whether Ms. Gant violated standards one and two.
Or both.
Or both.
Mm-hmm.
And then decide whether or not we agree with the sanctions that have already been re-
Those are the three decisions that the board will be making today.
Those are the only three, that, that is the confines that we are in.
Ms. Gant, you'll have to come to the microphone.
May I respond? I'll put a timer on and keep it short. But are those the same standards that those other two bodies have?
Yes.
So, what if the people before them made a bad decision? And the first, the first hearing, there was a lady on that board that should have recused herself because she has an acrimonious relationship with my stepdad. She should not have been, and who knows how much influence she had over that board? I don't know if that's something that has, Ms. Douglas has addressed, and I know this is the first time I've said it. But, and they, again, felt like I violated four standards. What do you have in front of you now, two? So, guys, there's, and then, did you want a question? Sorry. There was one that said reasonably should have known. Can we talk about reasonably should have known? There's a reason that educators are trained. And if you don't mind my asking or posing the question, it could be rhetorical or whatever. But how were you trained? Did you go get a master's degree or, you know, get a degree in education? How much time did you spend on the code of ethics? I spent forty-five minutes after school, one day a year, in a position that I enjoyed, but I knew that I was untrained for, that I said in two face-to-face interviews. So, reasonably should have known, I'm not sure if that's something that applies to me. I don't think it, it's fair to say I reasonably should have known those things. Were they, but you, nevermind, that's not something you have to plunder, so I'm not gonna introduce that.
Ms. Frino, could you add? Okay.
All right.
So, I'll, I'll just follow up to say, you have exercised your hearing rights. And so, whether somebody should have recused or not is irrelevant at this point, because you have a new body before you.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms., Dr. Moore?
I, I just wanna clarify, um, unfortunately, this is the fir-, not the first time we've seen an incident like this or incidences in other ways. And I just wanted to make sure, in, in this case or in any other case, there was no physical contact with students. Is that correct?
That is correct. No physical contact, communications on Facebook inbox, Messenger only.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Douglas, you had reserved time?
I just have a few follow-up things. Um, licensure, um, I don't know if you all know much about the Apple program, but it's a two-year program. Um, licensure has stated that Ms. Gant has not completed that program and has not passed, um, some of the, the testing that is required. That's information from licensure. Page ninety-nine. Next time you come at a grown man, come correct, miss, with laughy faces. Come is spelled C-U-M. Ms. Gant replied, "You spelled come wrong," kinda with a thinking emoji. And the next response is, "Or did you?" Student says, "I spelled it like that on purpose." Ms. Gant admitted, "Yes, I mean, this is, would be where I got myself into a situation I didn't know how to get myself out of." She didn't know how to get herself out of that situation.
She didn't know how to get herself out of that situation. And luckily for the students, that message was discovered the very next day. At the hearing, she said, "They are children, and so they are not necessarily at fault. So I should have been able to behave or maintain my professionalism." Today, she says, "You don't know what you don't know." That's true. You don't. But she's a parent. I'm a parent. As a person in society, you know that that's not the kind of content you want your students to receive from a teacher, whether they initiated it or not. The sentencing options for Ms. Gant range from written reprimand, probation, suspension, revocation. Those are levels of notification, level one, two, three, and four. They coincide with written reprimand, probation, suspension, revocation. It has been recommended twice now that she receive a level four public notification, which is a notification that a non-licensed educator has violated the Code of Ethics in a manner equivalent to a violation that warrants revocation of a license. The purpose is to notify the public that the educator is not recommended for employment or volunteering in an educational setting, and that the non-licensed educator is not eligible for future licensure. The sanction's appropriate. We've seen cases like this before, and unfortunately, we will see them again. I'm asking that you uphold the sanction.
Any other comments from the board? I'm ready for a motion on the first finding of fact.
I would motion that we approve the findings of fact. As, is that the correct way to state that motion?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Woods, and then Ms. Chambers, all in. Do we need to do a roll call on these?
Yes, a roll call and probably before to see if there's any discussion on the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay.
Okay, on the motion, on the finding of fact, we'll call a roll. Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Six votes. Motion's passed.
All right. The second motion would be if she violated standards one, or two, or both.
I move that both standards were violated.
Okay. Ms. McFetridge, do we have a second? Any discussion?
Okay, on the second issue of the violation of standards one and two, Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Six votes, yes, zero, no's.
Our third motion that we need to take here on is the level of sanction.
Can I, before we make a motion, can there be a discussion point right here before we go, or do we have to make a motion and then discussion?
I would assume there could be discussion.
I think y'all can discuss it at any time. Yes, Dr. Hill.
So, looking at those components, really, I think we as a discussion point, you've got two options, and I'd like to refer to a principal or a leadership like you for discussion. So as a parent, I know the concerns that, I look at it from a parent's standpoint. But I guess really I only have two options, is to pass the, that's been set by the last two meetings, or an extreme probation that would have to be something of sort that this would never come again. I don't know if that's a possibility, and I'm not saying I'm even promoting that, I don't want to go there. But if I, if, if there is any alternative sentencing of restorative justice, one thing, I've been an adult as you have, you know what, how limited teachers are. We understand waivers that we give out. Oftentimes, we have an unprepared teacher in the classroom, which we see. And this is some part of the waiver situation that we run into when people are not trained to be in the process. The ethics are, there is no gray area in that, zero. As a parent, and as a father to a son, if I read that, I'm sure I would be sitting here not proponent of that as well. So I'm just putting that all out from a discussion standpoint to process this situation that we're dealing with. And as, from a restorative justice standpoint, is there grace in that based on the testimony that we've heard that are very dire, unacceptable? And, you know, when I look back, what's taken place, there's no excuse. So I, so I guess I'm asking, is there any possibility for anybody on the board seeing that there is an alternative sentencing matter here for a severe probationary period than a zero tolerance? Which I don't even know if I would want that, but I just think that's the only consideration that we would have, that stands before us as a board. And as a parent, probably not. As an educator, Ms. Newton, you've been there, would you want that in your school? And that's, those are the questions I think that we would have to, have to ask.
Dr. Moore?
I've been mulling over this yesterday and today as well. I think my zero tolerance is the physical contact, and this is where there is a little bit more of a gray area. If that could have happened, fortunately, it has not, to our knowledge. I recall an incident similar to this where I also felt very uneasy, where it was, I think we did an extreme probation with a mentor or someone having to be checking, you know, there had to be some check-in on a regular quarterly basis in letters written to us that there was no inappropriate relationships. I'm not saying that we should do that then, we should have done that then or now, but I can see how we could set up something if we feel that this would not happen ever again. And that's, so I'm thinking between those two things.
Well, I'm thinking it's either what we've been recommended or an alternative, strict alternative sentencing plan. But once again, I'm a community guy, I would have, you know, would you hire a person, Ms. Newton, or in the classroom if that came and you saw that placed in the portfolio of a teacher? And I think those things have to be, have to be, have to be placed in those files so you know what you're dealing with. Because as you stated, Mr. Sutton, we're responsible for our children. And, you know, to place her back in that situation, happen again, then we're liable. I mean, those things we have to look at from that standpoint. Also, at the same time, she wasn't a trained teacher. I mean, you know, and look, I'm an advocate for waivers as anybody. I think you all know that, when that comes, because what do you have? You have a waiver or a non-waiver when you have a custodian teaching. I mean, that's, that's, that's the situation of our education right now. And it's unfortunate that our teachers are facing things they're facing, because, see, I sit over here and look on the other side, thinking about those young men who haven't been raised right as well. That's a double catch, all right? And so not only, not only are they teaching, I mean, that's a parenting issue that has to be addressed as well, and, you know, and that's a, that's a community issue that I'm going to be leaving here in a minute to try to go address. But I just want to state that for the facts from Fitz, that the dynamics that we're working with are very severe on many levels. And, you know, I think if there's a dire situation in the classroom, the principal, knowing what they have to deal with, is in that situation to make that decision. And that's what I was asking Ms. Newton and her expertise. I've never been a principal. Would I hire a college president, came in? I've had to let people go like that too, based on those facts, you know, of dealing with teachers. So I understand that. And place things in file, you can resign, somebody else want to do that, that's fine. So we have to protect the governing situation of our state. We understand that. But as our acting chair today, I want to put that on the records.
Okay. Ms. Woods, you had a comment?
I do have a question, because I have not taken this ethica training that she had. Does it address at all relationships with students in this forty-five minute training? It does.
Absolutely, yes. Dr. Hill, you asked some questions, and I was going to try to refrain from commenting, but we'll answer your question. I think what bothers me most about this is when she said, "How would I have known?" But then she said, "Well, if my son had gotten this text, I would have been upset." And so, so I think she knew. You know, I think that she knew that this was inappropriate at the time that it was happening. And it makes me wonder when she said, "I would have to have training to be able to know that this was wrong." If I'd never been trained, I would still know that this was not right. And that gives me pause as far as putting her back in a classroom. How many other things are not going to have been in the training that would not have been known? And so that, you know, I take the responsibility of protecting each and every student in this state very seriously. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a huge responsibility for us, you know, and it's not pleasant. It's not a fun thing to have to decide. But, you know, I think that two other groups have gone through and heard a lot more testimony than what we've heard today. And I think we've all read the transcripts and seen, and, Dr. Hill, does that answer your question?
Yes, absolutely.
I would have, I would have great pause.
Okay.
Okay, all right. But that's, that's up to you to decide this morning.
No, and I think the thing that I have heart with is that we have, we are more lenient to drug usage, because there is a clear cut. You went into a program, you did ten steps, you have a weekly counselor, to the point that we've approved some that I, I'm not comfortable with, but, you know, that's how it goes, because that is more cut and dry. This is not as cut and dry. You know, there is not a, per se, a program here. And I think this is why this is so hard for us. It's not helping, this is just sort of the process here. Sometimes I think we are too lenient in those cases. But with that accountability measure in place, it is more black and white, and therefore we can, you know, give second and third chances versus this not being, the accountability looks very different.
I think also the potential for student impact here is greater.
Yes, yes.
So do we have a motion on sanction?
I'm not sure, Dr. Hill. I mean, I think you started with a question, and you asked what options were. And so maybe Ms. Frino can come and address that part of your question, but I'm not sure that it got fully addressed.
Okay. And really, I was, I just wanted to take the temperature of the board more than anything.
I understand. I mean, this is always, this is always difficult. And knowing what you can and cannot do, and what you can and cannot consider, is always something that never hurts to refresh. So maybe Ms. Frino can help us with that.
Thank you. Lori Frino, the, again, there's a level four, which is the equivalent of a revocation for a teacher who is not licensed. A level three, which is the equivalent of a suspension. Level two, equivalent of a probation, and level one, equivalent of a written reprimand. And then there's room within those to take other steps, such as, you know, requiring reflection, or, you know, various other things that you've done before.
When you say level three, with suspension, what does that, so that you're suspended indefinitely? Or what?
It would be for a period of time.
Which we would decide?
Yes.
Any other discussion before we?
I just get the, is it's like, where do we draw the line? Obviously, you said yours is physical contact, but I don't even want that to become close. So, and I just think about all of the teachers in Arkansas that we have to look at after this and say, "Well, it's okay if you do Facebook messages." That's the precedent that we set as a board. And I don't know that I feel comfortable, I don't know that in good conscience I can look at them and say that, because it's not okay. And I'm not taking the ethica training, and even I know that.
I think as a way of thinking, and I, look, I agreed, you know, and I don't think anybody here is disagreeing on how we want our students treated, I mean, from a morality standpoint. And in many cases, school is the only place you're getting it. I mean, that's, you know, unfortunately, that's what we're dealing with today. I guess what my question was, was there appetite for an extreme suspension with a very rigid probation that could be restorative justice? That's, I think that's all I was asking from a standpoint of, if you're suspended for five years, you're suspended. And if you really want to get qualified, then we don't terminate that opportunity to do that. And I think from a standpoint of, you know, I know as a coach, I never want to put anybody off the team, but I want to see how bad they want to play. How bad do you want to be a part of this organization? Are you willing, are you willing to do the things necessary? Obviously, she's expressed that she would like to be a part of the teaching profession. Well, I think from a standpoint, let's see. I mean, that's, if that's, if that happens to be the case. If not, you know, you show up every morning at 6:00 a.m., you miss, that means you quit. So you got a five-year probation. If you don't want to, an extreme, and you can't teach during that time, but we're going to hold that out there for you to be rehabilitated for restorative justice. We've all made mistakes, and I think, Dr. Moore, your point, so, I got, listen, I've had, I have two daughters, and I've had a situation like this with my oldest daughter with the male. So I'm very sensitive to this. So I don't want, I don't want anybody to think I'm taking anything lightly. So, but also, I, you know, I guess when you flip the switch, though, and you look at, we're moving teachers and we know we're in dire need of teachers, and we know the population of teachers that we're trying to get in the places that need teachers the most, we're decreasing the opportunity to develop someone who has a passion for it, but needs to be trained morally, ethically, all those things. And that's my deal, if there is an appetite for that extreme, you know, training to expel, to suspend, and to be rehabilitated in that process, is that a consideration? And I guess that was even my more question to you, Ms. Newton and Dr. Moore being in the classroom, and Ms. McFattig, you know, in those situations. From a corporate standpoint, Ms. Chambers, I know you've dealt with these things with, you know, with employees that you try to, that you try to do, and we've all done that. And so that's, that's why we're here, to try to make the best decision that we possibly can. And I'm going to quit rambling.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Frino?
Thank you, Ms. Newton. I just want to clarify one thing. If there's a probation, I believe I heard Dr. Hill say a probation. I think he meant a suspension.
Suspension, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because probation, the teacher can still teach.
No, 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 no. I meant level three, the suspension, where you can't teach, and I'm saying that we, and that's like a suspension period during a rehabilitation.
Okay. We're still needing a motion.
Now, if there is no motion, what is our course of action?
I think I can answer that. You have to, you have to have a motion. There has to be action by the board on this, on this matter.
Ms. Chambers, did I see you moving to your microphone? I'll put you on the spot.
Oh, I just, I just hate it so. Ms. Gant, I so appreciated hearing from you today. As we anticipated you coming a couple of times previously. Yet... As we anticipated you coming a couple of times previously, the opportunity going back to the transcript multiple times. I have to admit that I do make a distinction with children and judgment. And I am compelled to make a motion to accept the sanction, but with a very heavy heart. Because I love that you fought for this and that you've kept coming back and put yourself into a situation that I know is uncomfortable, which is a lot about you and your resilience. But to something that Ms. Newton said that I agree with, I do think as a teacher, as a human being, you could reasonably have been expected to know that this was not good judgment and inappropriate. I do make the distinction to what Dr. Moore said. I think you bring up a great point with how we've handled some of the drug issues. This is about the children and them being apart so close to and, I think, more at risk of harm.
Ms. Gant, well, thank you.
But I, so my motion is to accept the sanction as it was stated. But I would like Ms. Gant to know how much I appreciate what you obviously have gone through and learned and what you brought to us today and said to us today. It matters. And I wanted to appreciate you for that.
Okay. Have a motion from Ms. Chambers to accept the sanction. Do we have a second?
All seconded out.
Second from Ms. McFetrich. Any discussion?
On the motion to accept the sanction, Dr. Moore? You can vote yes, no, or abstain. Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Ms. Woods? Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. I did. Okay, thank you. Dr. Hill?
Abstain.
On that motion, there are four votes in the affirmative, so it does pass.
Okay. Ms. Gant, you know, we would have loved to put you back in the classroom because we could see your passion. But again, I think our responsibility is to the students of Arkansas to make sure of their safety. And so wish you well. We hope you take the wisdom and lessons that you've learned today and apply them in your life as you go forth. And I think this would probably be a good time for a short break. That work?
I wanted to say, um, thank you for your time. I know we had to continue, and then I won't move on, but I just hope in the future, I would have done five-year suspension with training because that's what I need. So I hope that you will consider that for those that may come behind you because they're all, obviously, teachers placing some of the same uncomfortable positions. But I appreciate all the thought and consideration you gave. That does mean something to me that this is difficult and that you do value teachers. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wish you well.
Thank you. And we'll be in touch.
Why don't, um, it's 11:42. Why don't we take about a five-minute break and come back at about 11:50? Okay? If it is, there is no objection, we're going to move, I think it's item five or six. Item five, the waiver extension from the Barton School District. We're going to move that. The superintendent has a meeting at 1:00. So if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and hear that now. It's item five on your action agenda. Ms. Webb?
So I didn't see Mr. Tolett outside. He's not out there. I thought he was here.
He was here earlier, so, yeah, okay.
He's not out there now.
Okay, well.
So do we go, they left?
I guess maybe we just start.
Do we want to go to lunch?
The other three are on Zoom.
Yeah, I think we could go ahead with the other three.
Okay, all right. Well, let's back up then. I think it'd be then item three, Mountain Pine.
Tracy Webb from the Charter Unit. Today, we have Mountain Pine School District and Federal Programs Coordinator Dana Janisch on Zoom to request a waiver for two days of the required 178 instructional days due to a power outage in the community during the snowstorm. They are planning to add 30 minutes of instructional time to each day to make up the time. They still would only have the 176 days versus 178. And so that's why they're requesting a waiver for standards, from standards only. And it would only be for this school year. And Ms. Janisch is on Zoom if you have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Chambers, any questions?
No.
Ms. Woods?
Thank you.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, it sounds like you all have a solid plan in place so that additional 30 minutes would be beneficial. As we know, many students are weather behind or just have certain struggles this year. Can you just talk a little bit more about what those 30 minutes will look like moving forward?
Sure, Dr. Moore. We wanted to make sure that instead of adding two days on to the end of the year, that where we felt students perhaps wouldn't be as engaged, we could add those 30 minutes on to the end of the day for 24 days. During that time, our teachers have a plan in place to work on deficiencies, particularly our deficiencies tend to be in reading, core area concepts, computational skills in math. So we were going to take the time to work on those deficiencies. Teachers are handing in lesson plans to principals at the end of every week specifically tailored to that 30 minutes at the end of the day. So we know that they're just not engaged in busy work or homework, but we're actually doing active instruction.
Thank you. And so teachers and parents are already aware that y'all are requesting this?
Yes, they are. They're just waiting to find out if the waiver goes through.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. McFetrich? Okay, Mr. Sutton?
No questions.
Mr. Look it in. Okay. And Dr. Hill had to step out for another meeting. Does anyone have a motion?
I move to approve the waiver request.
Okay, a move to approve by Ms. Chambers. Do we have a second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Woods. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. And I was very impressed that it was well filed out because I agree that adding two days at the end sometimes is not very productive use of time. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, was that Mr. Tolett? Okay, so let's move to Barton.
The Barton School District is requesting a waiver extension of class size and teaching load for high school seminar courses, library media specialist ratio for K-12, daily planning period for K-12, school start date and teacher licensure for K-12. The waiver extension is requested for five years. The division requests that no more than one year be approved for the school start date waiver due to pending legislation of House Bill 1237. That would establish a new school start date.
Okay. And do we have someone here from the district?
We do. I'm sorry, we have Superintendent David Tolett here.
Okay, Mr. Tolett.
Sorry, Board. David Tolett, State Representative District 12. I was just on a conference call with Representative Crawford. Sorry about that. I'm also Superintendent Barton School District. I'll make this quick because I know y'all have had a long agenda. Essentially, we're going to ask for the Act 1240 waivers that we've been able to use for the last five years successfully. These waivers have been the, I guess, cornerstone of the system that we built to help improve students and student achievement. Unfortunately, because of the passage, or the soon-to-be passage of House Bill 1237, we are withdrawing our request for early start date waiver since our system was built, our successful system was built around that. It's sad because it's going to mean a lot of loss of opportunities for our students moving forward. But this law, what will become a law, will prohibit y'all from approving the needed waiver that we need over a the temporary target for building a new district-wide library. My elementary and high school are literally 10 steps apart, and in the building of this new media center, which is, it's going to be amazing. It's going to be state-of-the-art. We are wanting to, instead of hiring a second librarian, we are wanting to hire a library assistant and tech assistant combination position to help our students move forward with technology challenges and advancements in education, as well as to be able to put a maker space in our media center to, to make it more than just checking out books, to make it a 21st century learning experience for our kids. And we're requesting this ratio to be able to do that and save that salary, or I would say repurpose that salary into something that's going to be more efficient and effective for our students. The next waiver is our daily planning period. We have used this in the last five years. Essentially, we reduced our school day to create a after-school time that is equal to the planning time that our teachers receive during the school day, but we want to make it where our, we've made it for the last five years where it's interchangeable. So depending on which, if our teachers want to meet together, if they want to meet with high school teachers, if they want vertically or horizontally aligned, they may use that time to team during the day during their planning period and move their planning period after school officially, or vice versa, but it's interchangeable. We would like to continue that waiver for that purpose. And then finally, the last one we were requested, which is probably the second most important waiver that we possess now, is a waiver from teacher licensure in Arkansas Delta, especially in my area. You know, we're not around colleges. We're two hours away from any college. There are significant challenges to our area, and even though we're one of the top 30 highest-paying school districts in the state of Arkansas, every time we have an opening, we're lucky to have one or two applicants, and you just pray one of those actually has the certifications to be a teacher. We have exhausted every possible avenue in recruitment. I call, between me and my high school principal, we call every college in the state of Arkansas. We're part of every program that's in the state of Arkansas for teacher recruitment. We call, but our most successful place to recruit teachers is actually out of Mississippi. But this has been extremely important to us. I wish we could use it for special ed, which is probably one of the most crucial things that we need, but unfortunately, this is not available for that. So, but we would like to continue at least with what we have to, to at least offer, continue to offer our quality services to kids. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions you may have.
Would you expand a little bit about the bill that's about to become law?
So, House Bill 1237 is the bill that is, essentially run for parks and tourism. It pushes the start back, the date of school back, and the, but it, it also allows school to convert over to hours as opposed to days. So instead of having 178 days, now you have to meet so many hours, which would be the equivalent of 178 days, but it, it allows every school the opportunity to go to a four-day week, or extend, you know, 15 minutes and take off a week of a normal school year and everything else. However, on the second page of that, I think it's lines 13, 14, 14, 15, something like that, it will essentially take away the state board's power to grant an early start date waiver for any district like mine. And so because of that, we're, we're going to lose a system that I've spent five years and 70, 80 hours a week building.
What has been your start date?
Usually around August 7th. We do that for a number of reasons, but one is to give our ti, our teachers more time to teach prior to them testing. Because of that, we've been able to recruit, recoup over a kid's time at the school, probably around three quarters of a year, I believe, somewhere around that number of time before we test. There's another law that actually just passed that actually is going to solve that issue for us because it allows you to push testing back into May, which is going to be great. In combination with the early start date waiver, it would be excellent because you could pretty much teach, test, and go home as opposed to having time after the test. But the other thing it's done, we qualify about 75 to 80% of our students for, because they're low socioeconomic, they don't know how to, to get involved in our local community college and take concurrent credit classes. Our community college has worked extremely well with us, and we enroll our kids in high school classes, but then, and it's not compass testing. That's the old terminology. Accuplacer, maybe?
Asset.
Asset test. I can't, I never get it right. Asset test, the asset test they can take, and, and we can get them qualified to take concurrent and be enrolled in those concurrent classes before our community college actually starts. We qualify about 75 to 80% of that, but because this is going to be pushed back, that program will be lost, unfortunately. You know, there, there are avenues. I mean, if we wanted to convert over to a conversion charter, which our community would never do, or be a school of innovation, which is, again, I mean, I've had many conversations over the years with our board and our community, and they're, they're not willing to pursue that. It's not really even, I don't even consider it an innovative thing. It's just one waiver that actually helps us, but there's nothing real school of innovation about it, and, and that's a long process to go through. But, I mean, it is there if the community would ever support it or board would support it. Our, our school not. So, but anyway, that's, that's a little bit about, I'm sorry. I'm kind of going off on other things.
One other short question. On the waiver for the teacher licensure?
Yes.
Do you have many teachers that have been in the system that are having difficulty passing practices?
Yes. I mean, I, I mean, we, we see this even in sped. I, we can't find sped teachers. I mean, I, I can advertise. I've called every place in Mississippi, Tennessee, Arkansas. I mean, you just can't find them. One of our sped teachers right now is at the high school, and she does a fantastic job, and she's sped certified. She has 20 years, but it's been in the elementary ranks. She, you know, volunteered to step up for us and, and go to high school, and she's been great at it, and she's taken all the classes that she's supposed to, but just can't pass the test. And we're, we're about to get to the point where we're going to end a three-year AOP waiver on that, which means she can't stay in that position any longer, and so we're going to have to take her out and pretty much put a long-term sub in. I mean, that's going to be our only option, but that's in sped. In, in other areas, we've used it, like right now, we have a, a, a high school math certified teacher, but he's not certified for geometry, but he teaches geometry for us. He's very good at it. He does a great job. But, I mean, as far as getting teachers certified, it's a, it's a process, and it's a, it's a barrier. I mean, I, our choir and elementary teacher that we had, he's no longer with us, but we got him straight out of college. He's taken all of the classes, but just never could pass the test. And, I mean, it's, it's an issue in the Delta because, you know, as this teacher shortage gets worse, and especially at the end of this year, I mean, we're, we'll have more turnover this year than in the six years that I've been there combined, and it's going to be really hard to replace our losses. But with this waiver, it at least allows us to put the best individual we can find, you know, in front of our class, our, our kids and, and continue educational services.
Ms. Fadri? Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you for being here today. Just to piggyback real quick, what community college do you all work with?
We, we use Phillips County Community College.
Same for my community. Will they not work with you to change their start date?
No.
Well, I'll talk to them, because I feel like that, I mean, for our, no, our numbers are down too this year because of the seat time requirement, so fewer kids are taking community college courses, and it seems like everyone could come to some sort of agreement if that date is changing to, to allow those students to come earlier, wait two weeks to enroll, because that certainly is not the intention there.
I, I think what you will find with our, and it's, and I understand their point of view. We have a few, I mean, we have a handful of kids. Central has a lot of kids, and so they, and they're in Helena, and they, you know, pretty much, you know, go with whatever their calendar is, and I understand that because they send hundreds, you know, and...
Well, I hope something can be worked out just because of this. And so I talked with Tracy yesterday. I noticed that on y'all's application, you didn't have the question to provide evidence that the waivers have been successful, and I know you touched on it a little bit here, but I would, I would like to hear more evidence of how these waivers over the past five years have increased student achievement for your students.
I thought we sent that in a separate email.
Yeah, I think it might be on the second page, and maybe y'all didn't get this, y'all didn't get the second page, but it, it asked to provide, and I think as our board for many years have struggled with, do we grant waivers or not, and now that we have more ability to, I really want to see how these have impacted student achievement.
So, I mean, just off my, off the top of my head, starting with the class size and teacher load, again, that, that's allowed for the creation of our senior seminar class. It's helped us to boost our college participation rate to 60%, which is pretty good for the Arkansas Delta. And, and I attribute that to having an excellent counselor. I mean, there's, there's nothing that, I mean, I've done, I will say it's everything that our high school counselor has done to build relationships with those kids and to provide and bring in the opportunities that these kids don't get. The kids who are, don't even know where to begin, I mean, at least meet daily with our high school counselor, and, and like I said, it, it, I guess the evidence would be the increase in the number of students who are going to college, the number of kids that we actually have going to the workforce, which I consider to be extremely successful, but also pairing industry with education. The, the great thing about being Superintendent Barton and also State Representative District 12, I'm also on the Board of Quanis Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Helena Regional Medical Center, and so I have an opportunity to build a lot of relationships, and we have the opportunity to bring in a lot of industry from the community who takes advantage of the kids that we have to give them opportunities to be employed if they choose not to go to college, but to be employed right after high school. It, you know, if you've ever seen kids who, who have never experienced ballroom dancing, or even really know how to hold a fork properly in etiquette training and everything else, I, I think all of this is very valuable for, for this one waiver. For the second one, the library and media specialist, it's essentially allowed us over the last five years to save $65,000 a year, which has allowed us to reinvest that into a state-of-the-art media center. I mean, we have, I mean, we meet the, when I got there, we met the letter of the law as far as number of books, those kinds of things, but, you know, just because you have books from the 1970s doesn't mean that that's a good resource to have. And the role of libraries have changed over the year, and, and updating it from the old-school, what we think of, library to an actual functioning media center, maker space, you know, to provide multiple opportunities for our kids and allow them to explore learning in, in a lot of different ways, including digital, and going to even a one-to-one school through the last five years, and allowing our kids to access more technology, to be able to, you know, open up the library where we can download books, any book, not just what we have on the shelves, but any book for kids. That has worked extremely well, and, and we've seen a rise in our high school and elementary literacy rates, a lot of growth.
May I ask a question on that? Do K-6 students get weekly or daily interaction in the library?
We, we, that's what we strive to do. Most of our teachers do a stellar job, bringing their kids in at least once a week from their English classes to allow them to not only access the library, but like I said, it's, it's undergoing a change, so we've had limited, I would say, limited, I mean, what they could do in the library is very limited, and even though we've maximized that, it's fixing to get a huge upgrade. And so it, I will say it's being utilized, but it, it will be utilized way more moving forward.
Okay, and so it's, it's not a weekly scheduled, students go to the library?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We have a will, but they, but like I said, our teachers in the elementary, I know that they bring their kids in there once a week, but it's not necessarily a scheduled...
No, at my elementary, it's a special, so instead of going to PE one day, you go to that. Is that because of lack of having enough librarians, or why is that?
No, we have, our library, our, our full-time librarian is at the elementary, and so she, we, you know, we, we feel like that that's where she needed to be. We also felt like our English teachers, moving the high school library into the English classrooms, our English teachers could facilitate that because high schoolers get to a level where, you know, they're too cool to go to the library or whatever, and this just makes the books more available to them.
Okay.
To answer your question on the daily planning period, we did not have common planning time over the last five years. We have developed that because we have the ability now to flop that planning period, do horizontal and vertical alignment, as well as additional PD, PLCs, those kinds of things. And that's been wildly successful, and as I said, in 2019, we won six OEP awards, both for math and literacy and growth, and I, and I attribute that to our teachers actually having the time to sit down and have conversations, not only about kids, but also in how to better support the... any book, not just what we have on the shelves, but any book for kids. That has worked extremely well. And we've seen a rise in our high school and elementary literacy rates, a lot of growth.
May I ask a question on that? Do K-6 students get weekly or daily interaction in the library?
We, that's what we strive to do. Most of our teachers do a stellar job, bringing their kids in at least once a week from their English classes to allow them to not only access the library, but, like I said, it's undergoing a change. So, we've had limited, I would say, limited, I mean, what they could do in the library is very limited. And even though we've maximized that, it's fixing to get a huge upgrade. And so, I will say it's being utilized, but it will be utilized way more moving forward.
Okay. And so, it's not a weekly scheduled, students go to the library?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We have a will, but they, but like I said, our teachers in the elementary, I know that they bring their kids in there once a week, but it's not necessarily a scheduled...
No, at my elementary, it's a special. So, instead of going to PE, one day you go to that. Is that because of lack of having enough librarians? Or why is that?
Uh, no, we have, our library, our full-time librarian is at the elementary. And so, she, we, you know, we feel like that that's where she needed to be. We also felt like our English teachers, moving the high school library into the English classrooms, our English teachers could facilitate that, because high schoolers get to a level where, you know, they're too cool to go to the library or whatever. And this just makes the books more available to them.
Okay.
To answer your question on the daily planning period, we did not have common planning time over the last five years. We have developed that because we have the ability now to flop that planning period, do horizontal and vertical alignment, as well as additional PD, PLCs, those kinds of things. And that's been wildly successful. And as I said, in two thousand nineteen, we won six OEP awards, both for math and literacy and growth. And I attribute that to our teachers actually having the time to sit down and have conversations, not only about kids, but also in how to better support them, but also, you know, have the time to plan out curriculum and instructional strategies. And then on our, of course, our teacher waiver, it's crucial, because I would not be able to put necessarily the best qualified or the best person in front of my teachers if we didn't have that. It allows me to hire teachers, like I said, who may have taken all the classes, they just can't pass the test. But they're very good at what they do. They're very good educators. But unfortunately, they just, they can't make those last five points. Always seems like they miss it by, like, one to five points. I don't know what the deal is with that, but it just seems like that's how it plays out every time.
How many teachers do you currently have employed?
Sixty...
Oh, I mean, on the license, on the actual forty?
Currently, with our hires, I think, three currently.
And does your district, do you all require them to be on some sort of pathway within and receive that certification with any certain amount of time?
Not necessarily, because they're not necessarily on ALPs, because we've had this waiver. One of the barriers is, you know, and I'll use a math teacher for instance, you know, we'll hire them as a math teacher and they'll be teaching classes they are certified in, but they may be that one class that they're really good at teaching, that they don't have the certification in. But if I asked them to go back to school, they would just leave and go find a job where they could certify in and not have to go back to classes. And I can't blame them, but it's allowed us to keep those kinds of teachers.
Okay. That, I think that's different than someone totally new that's never taught before and has no program. And so, my hope would be that if you're totally new and you're not connected to anything, you all are providing the mentors, you are helping them connect to a program, so that eventually they reach that licensure status.
Right. If, we've not, in my knowledge, we've never hired anybody who has not completed at least the Apple or the teacher program. They've just not, they haven't passed the test. Everybody we've utilized under this, let me be clear, has just not passed the test. They are actually trained teachers, they just haven't passed the test.
Okay.
And we're able to employ them where some districts can't. And that's the great thing about this waiver.
I think, lastly, I think I read that, are you leaving the district to be representative?
I am. I'm stepping down.
Okay. And do you know your...
Yes.
Have they hired the next?
Yes. Bruce Guthrie, the high school principal at Wynn, will be taking my spot.
Okay. I think, I have sometimes concern granting a five-year thing, not knowing what even next year will look like under different leadership. Have y'all had these conversations? And does he support this?
Yes, he supports it very much.
Okay. And I guess, we've done this before where there's a handoff of leadership, but that does provide some hesitation, because, you know, he could look at them totally differently in that sense. Okay.
Our board, our board has appreciated having this. And our board is very well-versed in what these waivers do for us. And they were very disappointed to, you know, that we were going to lose our early start date waiver. But they understand that it's going to be a reshift in the system. Of course, you have a new superintendent, he's going to come in and have to build a new system. But they're, you know, they'll be supportive of him. But they're well-versed in what this means for our district. Because we really wouldn't, I mean, we would probably have, you know, just have violations every year, because we would have, you know, non-certified staff in positions. But our selection process for this staff, I mean, we've really been blessed to get some good ones. Right. Right. And I'll just make this point, because this is very rare to find in a school district, a hundred percent of our staff support this. A hundred percent of our PPC support this. And ninety, I forgot what, ninety-six percent, I can't remember the numbers now. But it's like ninety-six percent of our students and community support this. It's been that successful. And so, you know, we're unified in having this. And because people have seen the success and the opportunities it's created for kids, opportunities that Delta kids don't normally get. That, I was a turnaround principal in the state of Arkansas on the western side. I grew up on the western side. And I went to the work for the Department of Education overseeing or helping to implement the SIG program in these schools in the Delta and just went over there. And it just broke my heart to see that they don't have the same opportunities as kids in western part of the state. And so, when that position came open, I wanted to build a system that, where they did have those opportunities. And because of these waivers, we were able to do that.
Ms. Woods? Ms. Chambers? Mr. Looked it?
Just a quick one. On the planning period, it was more just because I was curious about it. I agree with you on the common planning and how important that is. That's awesome. You've been able to do that. So, just to clarify, they have a forty-five-minute plan time during the day and then also common plan time after school?
Right.
How did you make that work, I guess? Because that's, I think that's really awesome, but how did you do that?
Right. So, the, what we, one of the things that we looked at, because we revamped, from day one, the first day I had my teachers in PD, we reworked our whole vision, mission statement. So, we would know where we're going, what we're building toward. Through the process with the teachers and building that collaborative effort, one of the things that kept coming up is we need more time. We need to be able to work together and have those conversations. So, we looked at what we could do. And what we came up with is we had more minutes than was required by law. So, we actually reduced our school day so that every person in our district has that time from the time we dismiss school till their contract is up, that forty-five-minute time, to be able to be on a same planning period. And so, it gives them the ability to all meet together if necessary, or have a PD or a big meeting. It also allows elementary to meet with high school, vice versa, grade levels to meet, whether you want to meet with the grade level before you or after you. But even in the school day, some of those planning periods align. And so, they choose to meet during the school day and do their planning period after. And we wanted our teachers to continue to have the flexibility to make those decisions. And then on days that they don't have meetings, they have two times to plan. And it just gives them a lot more time to, you know, grow professionally.
I had a couple of questions. One of them was on the class size and teaching load. You had talked about how it applied to your senior seminar class. But then, in the application, it talked about adding that seminar class for the ninth grade. Are you asking for the ninth grade also?
Yes, I'm sorry. That is something that new, that our counselor wants to start. And she's wanting to start that up. I had forgotten about that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. What will that ninth grade class look like?
It's kind of a transition. One of the places that we found where we, I wouldn't say lose kids, but kids are less successful, because they don't fully understand what a credit is and, you know, how it impacts. And most credit recovery is, we've found in our district, is caused because ninth graders don't take it seriously. And then they rack up these gaps. And then they spend the rest of their education career in high school trying to make up for the gaps. And so, we wanted to put into place a support, or she wanted to put in a place of support to help, I guess, educate them a little bit better and to, you know, help them explore, start exploring career opportunities, college opportunities, help them see what they're working toward. Maybe it'll become a little bit more meaningful. But also, help support them academically and talk about, these are the credits you have to have. So, let's create a plan. You know, it's always better if a child going into high school has a plan of, these are the classes. I mean, I know when I went to college, you had to sit down and say, these are the classes. I'm going to take year one, year two, year three, year four. And so, creating some of those plans for ninth graders where they're working toward their goals. And say, okay, look, by the time you get to be a junior or senior, if you want to be, take concurrent credit classes, then this is the, this is what you have to have. This is what you have to have on your ACT, or you have to have, you know, grade point average, or, you know. And just letting them know those opportunities.
It sounds a lot like a student success plan.
Yes.
And so, but you're wanting to have an actual, is this class going to meet every day?
Yes.
Okay. And then the counselor also does a senior class that meets every day?
Yes.
So, how many periods a day is she going to be?
She would probably be tied up three to four.
Okay.
And since, you know, once the, and I forgot what law passed in the legislative session where counselor has to spend, and I forgot the percentage of time. She prefers to spend that percentage of time in direct contact every day with those students. Before I, before we gained these waivers, you know, we didn't have a senior seminar class. So, seniors would trickle in, I gotta go see the counselor, I need this, and, well, now there's a scheduled time where all those questions can be asked, those things can be done. We're trying to create the same thing with ninth grade. And she feels like the best way to see and service and build relationships with kids and to help them through their high school career would be to add these additional classes. That's by her recommendation.
Okay. Is she a counselor for nine-twelve or seven-twelve?
Seven-twelve.
So, half the day she's going to be with ninth and seniors, and the rest of the day has to be spread out for the other four grades?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, you know, I just worry about the other students getting what they need also, so.
She does a great job taking care of all of our kids. I think this will actually improve the efficiencies by which she takes care of our kids. But, you know, being a small school, I mean, we're very limited in resources and we try to make the most...
How many students are we talking about, seven-twelve?
Seven-twelve is, I think, seven-hundred-and-thirteen. And there's like three-hundred-and-thirty-something, maybe, in the high school.
So, seven-twelve, seven-hundred-and-seven, and she's the only counselor for that group?
Yes, of three-hundred-and-thirty-five kids, I believe.
Wait. Okay. I got lost. Seven-twelve has how many?
Three-hundred-and-thirty-five, I believe. Somewhere, don't quote me on that exact number, but it's somewhere close to that.
I misunderstood. I thought you said seven-hundred and...
Oh, no, no. Seven-hundred-and-thirteen district, what, I'm sorry.
Okay, I got it now. Okay. All right. Okay.
How about college and career coach?
We do not.
No. That, because there's not one offered through the community college, or?
We have not had an opportunity to do that, despite our attempts to try.
Hopefully, maybe in the future, that will occur, to give her some more support.
Yeah. I can see where a college career coach could really help this counselor with this load on the seminar classes. And it's something that's worth every penny. It's a great thing.
And I agree, the problem is, you know, finding, number one, somebody who's willing to do that in our area, and then, or partner with us. And then, number two, we're one of the poorest school districts in the state. And we're one of the top thirty highest paying, so our resources are very limited. And so, adding additional personnel is very thing. We'll, you know, with this extra COVID or S R money that's coming in, those are definitely supports that we're looking at, because we're going to have the funding, at least for a temporary time, to be able to do some of that. But I couldn't agree more. I mean, I would have loved to have taken opportunities for this, but unfortunately, we've just not been able to make that work yet.
One last question on the daily planning and for K-12. You had made the statement that your hundred percent of your teachers were in favor of these waivers. Does that include this planning period?
Yes.
After school?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I'm assuming we need to take each one of these separately, as far as motions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Ms. Newton, you can do it any way that you want. You could take it as a group, you could take it separately. But I would remind the board that there were some modifications made by the superintendent to the original waivers.
So, probably be best to do each one of them separately then?
That would be fine.
Okay. All right. Is there any more discussion?
I will say that I had talked with the department about sending the application back so that we could get that evidence. But with the dining day period, that wasn't an option. But I do want to make sure going forward that we get that question number four answered, and we get it answered well. Because as we are, you know, it's been five years. And so, there should be, we didn't test last year, but there's previous years of student growth and achievement that we should be seeing attached to these. And I don't want to set that precedent.
So, I do want to apologize. So, when he started, when they started their waiver request, it was prior to the last board meeting when that was requested. So, I did send those questions to him. I added those. They answered them. I added it to the version, but the wrong version got posted. The one that got posted was right before he answered those questions. So, it is on the new form for them to answer, but just because of the timeframe.
Got it. So, when I was looking at it, okay, okay.
And so, we uploaded the wrong one, so I apologize for that.
Okay. And, you know, and that's something that I think, I just want to be out there to state that I want, I don't want a sentence from districts in the future. I want student achievement evidence. We've had this for five years. I am hesitant to do five more years with new leadership. And I don't know if the district would be willing to do three or two. I don't know. Just throwing it out there. I think five years again is a while.
Any other comments from the board?
Dr. Moore's concern, one of the things we have done in the past is if there was voluntary, I think, interest in the district requesting the waiver, to suggest they would come back with a report in some shorter period of time, just to give us that comfort, that the transition has occurred in leadership.
Sure. I don't have a problem putting that into a recommendation or recommending. I mean, we have no problems providing a report to the department on these waivers. My only ask is, we were asked of this five years ago. And I think one out of the five years, we were actually sent something to fill out. The other four, we were not. And I've requested, you know, two or three times in the beginning. APSRC was assigned by the previous board to assist us. We got no assistance in that. But the, I, the waivers were brand-new when I went before the board the last time. In fact, I don't, is there anybody on, I believe Ms. Newton was on the board when I went. But anyway, we don't have a problem answering questions. We would just like to request that we be sent the questions that y'all want answered, I guess. That way, we have a direction instead of just, I mean, leaving it up to us to just provide, provide things.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, Ms. Freino, on these waivers, they've asked for five years within the new rules and regulations. Can we change the time? Or does that have to be something from the district? I'm sorry, Ms. Hyatt. I'm sorry, wrong one.
I was hiding over in the corner. Mary Claire Hyatt with the department. Under the new twelve forty regulations, you do have the authority to change the time on your own. It doesn't have to be voluntary. So, if it's the will of the board to make it four years, three years, two years, whatever, as long as it's part of your motion, that's appropriate. Also, with the reporting, you can make it mandatory through your motion also. It doesn't have to be voluntary.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, I think we'll take, do you want to have more discussion on the time period, or?
I just had a question for Dr. Moore, really. Would you be more comfortable with a grant of five years and a reporting period that is something less than that? Or to really limit the waiver period?
I don't know. The time period here is arbitrary to say five years, because who's to say that they don't get a new superintendent in a year from now, you know? And this happens across the state. It's just so happening right now, as we are starting to see more and more five-year extension requests. I just wanted to think about that. And I did want to clarify, are they still asking for the waiver for the six-hour day? No. Okay. So, it's, okay.
And to your point, Ms. Chambers, I just wanted to remind everyone that you are free to give notice and... And to your point, Ms. Chambers, I just wanted to remind everyone that you are free to give notice and do a review, of, a review of waivers at a time if it becomes of concern to you, so if you did grant it for a full five years, and then there was additional change in leadership and you became concerned, we can issue notice and, and do a review.
Is there a possibility to come back?
You can modify your waivers at any time. You should just submit a request and we go through the process, that's right.
I would just suggest to the, reference not only to this particular waiver request, but others, um, to make it as easy as possible, uh, to go with the, the waiver extension period of time that is being requested, but to have the rigor that you talked about in terms of, um, results. So that the onus is on the reporting of, of evidence as opposed to arbitrarily then shortening whatever period of time they maybe even wanted.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So on class size and teaching load, uh, I, I think it applies to the ninth grade and, uh, twelfth grade is, is what's being asked for.
And just for the school counselor position?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve. I just wanted to make sure, it sounds like there were some adjustments. I just want to make sure the waivers as we're voting on them reflect whatever adjustments have been made. So that one stands? Is that right?
Yes, that would, that, that one would stand as made, and, uh, we will provide reporting to y'all. I think that would be the only change, uh, to that waiver, and, but all of them actually, so.
So to your point, to be clear, what's the reporting period? I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if annually, or we should do a midpoint check?
I think that, that would, especially since we've had, um, testing pause and, and different things going on, I think a midpoint would be a, a good, um.
Is that three years? What is a midpoint?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
I don't know. I don't know, what do we think? Or just say midpoint?
Okay. Okay, so let's hear this whole wa- this whole motion again, please.
I move. That we approve, now, can, can you, can you, can you speak to the specifics of the, of this particular waiver? And, and then we'll just put our reporting on the end of that.
So this is for the ninth grade, and for our counselor to go over in class size for our ninth grade and senior, uh, classes, just for our, our counselor working with those. Um, and, and I guess to provide a midpoint waiver or a check on, on that waiver.
So it's a five-year waiver with a midpoint check in terms of report out?
Correct.
That is my motion.
All right. All right, that's a motion from Ms. Chambers. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second from Dr. Moore. Um, I think we can do a voice here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, the next one is the library media specialist ratio for K twelve. And, and before, before we take it, I, I had one question written in, I just now saw it, uh, on that. Uh, you are committed to provide, providing, uh, an assistant, uh, that was, uh, going to be technology?
Yes, we are actually interviewing for that position tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, we've had that posted, and we actually have a really good applicant for it, so.
Good, all right, okay, all right. So this one is for the, uh, library media specialist ratio, K twelve. Do you want to report on that?
I do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, mid, uh, is this one for five years al- also? Five years also? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the waiver for the ca- library media specialist, K twelve, uh, with a midpoint report at two and a half years for, and the full waivers for five years. Okay, that motion's by Mr. Sutton. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. McThatcher, all in favor, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I forget to do the discussion part. Y'all gonna have to holler at me. Okay, um, daily planning period for K twelve. Any motion on that waiver?
Move to approve. And, and might it be possible that, just to make it easy on them and us, all these waivers will come back with a midpoint report? That be all right? That is my motion.
And the waiver is for?
Yes, and for five years, and, again, to apply to each.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Ms. Chambers. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Woods, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, um, school start date has been taken out, has been withdrawn, so the next one is teacher licensure for K twelve.
I move to approve with the conditions previously, previously stated. Waiver of five, report out two and a half.
Very good, good job. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Woods, all right, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. I think that's all, Ms. Webb, that's all?
Thank you, board. I appreciate it, I really do, and, uh, it, it will help our district. Thank y'all for doing this.
Okay, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Um, do we want to move on to the next two, or break for lunch? The other two are online. Hi, somebody give some direction.
Complicated are they? Tracy? Let's just go ahead and get them knocked out.
All right, so we'll go back to, um, let's see, we did Mountain Pine. Uh, Gravit, it's item four on your agenda.
The Gravit School District is requesting a waiver of library media specialist ratio and time requirements in the middle and high school so that the specialist can provide additional support and remediation to ninth-grade students who have failed a course due to unsuccessful virtual learning. The waiver is requested for three years, and today we have Superintendent Mary Bill Childress on Zoom to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, Ms. Childress.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. Um, I, I am here today requesting a waiver of the library media specialist time requirements. Uh, we have as a goal for all of our students, on-time graduation plus one. On-time graduation plus college, on-time graduation plus technical school, or on-time graduation plus career. And, uh, we are determined to meet that on-time graduation, uh, commitment to our students. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we have some students that have dug themselves into a little bit of a hole and are behind in, in reaching that goal. And, uh, we have, have been studying our data all along, um, doing what we can to keep students caught up and connected to school. Uh, the problem really has bottlenecked with our ninth-grade class. Those students that came from eighth grade, from middle school, and now into credit-bearing courses. And, uh, many of the students who are struggling are students that chose to do virtual at the beginning of the year. Those students who were unsuccessful, uh, we were able to bring back for the second semester, so the problems this semester aren't as large. Uh, we also have some onsite students that were not successful, it was their first year in high school. They had gotten into some bad habits in March, April, and May, and, um, didn't figure out until too late what they needed to do to be successful. And so in the report I shared with you that we had, uh, thirty-four ninth-grade students fail English nine, twenty-four fail Algebra I, twenty-seven fail Physical Science, and fourteen U.S. History in the first semester. And again, we have been able to bring them back on campus, um, where we could really pour into them and do some more intensive tutoring and support, so the numbers look much better for this semester. The problem for us is we have eighth graders coming up to ninth grade who are gonna need those courses also, and so we need those teachers to teach the ninth grader, the eighth graders who, uh, next year's ninth graders who are gonna be ready. Um, but then we also have students moving on to those tenth-grade courses, so we just really have a bottleneck, uh, with those courses, particularly the English and the Algebra. We should have enough seats to be able to accommodate for the Science and Social Studies. Plus, we're gonna be offering, um, summer school and some credit recovery summer school, and we're really gonna focus that on the Science and Social Studies as well. And so it's really these two courses. When we were looking at what we needed to do to meet these students' needs, um, at first we were thinking, well, we're gonna have to hire an extra English teacher and an extra math teacher to get these students through. Um, but trying to be physically responsible, that's, that's a hard decision to make when we know, um, we would be hiring a teacher to only teach one or two courses in the day. Not that we couldn't keep them busy for other things, um, but hiring two teachers, uh, or even three if some of them didn't have multiple credentials, could be as much as two hundred thousand dollars per year. And if we weren't able to get everybody on track this year and, and needing more years of this kind of intensive service, it would cost our district more money. And so one of the things we looked at was our middle school library media specialist is certified in English, and our high school media specialist is certified in math and science. So if we could get a waiver of their time requirements, then they could teach those one or two courses. Um, in our conversations with them, they would either teach the first, uh, one or two periods of the day, or the last one or two periods of the day, so the rest of the day, they could serve in their library media specialist role when they were out of the library. Um, each one of them have a library aide that would serve in that role, so the libraries would never close, they would be open. Teachers and students could still come in and out. Um, fortunately, I, because of the pandemic this year, um, our librarians have learned to do a lot of things online, so our checkout system now is actually completely online and some of the other things, um, that they do that way, that we don't believe that our students and teachers will see a difference in the services. We did put in for a three-year request, uh, because we want to be able to follow this cohort of students all the way to graduation. And so, um, being ninth graders this year, if we're gonna graduate them on time, and we wanted to make sure when they're tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, we had that extra support just in case we needed it.
Okay. We'll see if there's any discussion. Ms. Chambers? Ms. Woods? Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you so much for sharing so much of this. I, I, I did have an initial concern that be- because there is an influx of federal money, um, that I didn't want this just to be a purely fiscal decision. Do you feel that, um, it is purely fiscal, or that because of the nature of, of these teachers and librarians, that this is the best choice for your district?
Well, they are phenomenal. Um, the high school librarian teaches GED classes for math, and so she, um, that is a passion for her, and so outside of the school day, um, she does that, and our, uh, middle school li- library media specialist also teaches Comp. One and Comp. Two for a local community college. And so both of them have that passion. They already know the students, they have relationships with the students, and this is just a very, very strong skill set for them. Um, we do have the S R funds that we could, um, that we could use for these positions, because it's for the purpose of, uh, you know, of learning loss. Again, that's a lot of money to put into just needing a couple of courses a day, and money that we could apply to help, um, closing the learning loss in other areas.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Ms. Childress. Um, will you be limiting these cl- courses to one or two courses a day? I think that is my concern, that this could grow beyond the one or two courses. Cause you also mentioned them as being mentors in their subjects areas. Could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure, we would definitely be limiting it to the one or two courses. Only what we needed as overflow from, from the other classes where we did not have enough seats. Um, but the great thing is, if they are teaching those courses and embedding the P, in, in the P L Cs for those content areas, that, um, when students have study hall time, or when students needed tutoring in those areas, the libraries are great places for students to go for that, um, for that extra support. So they could serve as mentors, uh, for students that needed help in those courses, because they'll be so, so engaged in, um, in that content area by being a part of the P L C.
Okay, and then another question, how well are your media aides trained?
They are very well trained. In fact, one of our media aides is a certified teacher. Um, and so our, our media aides in both of those buildings are very well trained, and they've been doing it for several years. So they already have a great working relationship with, uh, with the library media specialist. They already have a system down and, and great communication, so it should be great.
Thank you, it looks like a very well thought-out plan. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sutton? Mr. Lookadood? Okay, all right, um, any more discussion? Okay, we need a motion on the library media specialist ratio and time requirements.
I make a motion that we approve the Gravit District twelve forty request on the waiver.
Okay, and, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Childress. I, I think you're very fortunate to have those two, um, educators on your staff.
We are, they're, they're amazing, and I, I will tell them you said that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Watson Chapel is item six on our agenda. Now, we've skipped around a little bit, I hope you're okay with that.
The Watson Chapel School District is requesting an extension of the waiver for teacher licensure for K twelve. The extension request is requested for a period of five years, and today we do have Federal Programs Coordinator Carrie Williams and Assistant Superintendent Bill Teets here in person to present the request.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Bill Teets, I'm Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
Uh, along with me is Ms. Carrie Williams, our Federal Coordinator, among other duties, along with the State Liaison. We're requesting an extension of the five-year twelve forty waiver. Uh, the waiver's been a, a boon to our district. I mean, it is very beneficial, it's helped us to finally start years without having a unlicensed teacher in the class or a long-term substitute. Um, we're working extremely hard with the current ones we have. We've got currently twenty, very, very similar to that number. We've got three that have progressed to the Apple program, one that is currently finishing the Apple program. We've got two others, one that is currently waiting on signature for his licensure, for his license. Another one that has just sent her, her paperwork in to get a license as she's passed everything. Our teachers are, our twelve forty teachers are constantly working to improve themselves and pass the praxis. Our praxis is a big thing down there, trying to get these folks to pass that. We're, uh, but that's our number one concern. Without this, we, we couldn't start the year without them. We don't have a, there's not a big influx of people coming to Pine Grove. We are working constantly and collaboratively with U A P B. Every teacher that we've been available to get, we have hired this year already that are licensed. Um, and we're constantly looking for more. We attend each, every teacher fair, but still, it's difficult. So, that we're requesting an extension of the waiver, and if I or Carrie can answer your questions, we'll do everything we can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lookadood? Mr. Sutton? Ms. Webb, did you have something?
I do. Um, the division requests that as a condition of the waiver, that they agree to work with the licensure office to develop a, a retention and recruitment plan for their staff.
Okay. Ms. McThatcher?
I noticed your, uh, school board was in support of this, but what I didn't see was stakeholder comments or recommendations. Did, can you want to comment on that?
Uh, we actually have a meeting tonight with our parents and stakeholders, uh, and that will be discussed at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
About extending. We had the support, uh, when we initially did the waiver, the support was there.
That kind of puts us in a little tough spot, cause it really should be in here today. Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank y'all for coming here. I know you've had a difficult year. Um, similar to, I don't know if you heard my concerns with the previous, um, district, but the, you all have had this waiver for five years. Could you tell me the number of teachers that have been employed under the waiver over the past five years?
A total, uh, altogether of the five years has been twenty-seven. We currently have. We currently have 20 now. One has graduated from a math program. We have the three that are in the Apple program. We have two that have passed the praxis test. So they're waiting on to get, actually get their licensure. And the rest, they're having a hard time passing the praxis exam.
Okay, have they, are you, do you all place any kind of requirement that they have to be in some program to eventually get their license?
We do not.
Okay, so those rest, if they're taking the praxis, have they been in a program? Or they're just taking the praxis on their own?
Well, they finished the program. The problem is they can't pass the praxis to actually get the licensure. So that's the, that's the problem.
Does your co-op have any sort of practice study groups or different resources for them?
They do, and we have connected them with the co-op and also with UAPB. So they've gone through those training or study groups to help with passing the praxis. But most of them has been three, one point to three points with passing the test.
I, the fourth question y'all answered that asked for evidence of success, but I didn't see any, it related to teacher success, you know, them getting their praxis. I would like to hear more about these teachers. Are they a majority high school or elementary school, or is it dispersed? And their student achievement results over the past five years?
It is dispersed. We have currently four that are elementary, which are the basics, and the rest are high school. The, I can tell you exactly what areas. We have one, two. We have three that are in history. One that's in Spanish. We have two that are in English. One that is in math. I'm sorry, two that are in math. And three that are in physical education. And then we have two kindergarten, one that is in art, one that is second grade, and four that are sixth grade.
Are they paired with a mentor?
We do have a mentor program that they're working with through the co-op and a buddy program that we're working at the district.
Are the ones in elementary receiving rise training?
Yes. Yes. And I want to mention that five of those were hired initially as paraprofessionals. And we hired them as paraprofessionals knowing that they had the degree. So when the waiver was approved initially, we were able to move them into a teaching spot after they had worked as a paraprofessional.
I know that certainly in the area, there's a lot of challenges filling positions. But the hope is not that this is just to fill positions, but it's to find excellent people to become excellent teachers. Do you feel like disciplines are in place to really support and build those teachers?
I do. They're doing extremely well and they want to stay in the area. Most of them are from that area. They want to stay in the area. The problem is just the praxis. So, you know, kind of not for sure of what to do besides the study groups and having the co-op and the local universities assist with them passing the praxis. I'm really not for sure what else we could do on top of that.
Thank you. Ms. Woods? Ms. Chambers? Anyone else? I'll wait till we get done, I've got one question for Ms. Webb. Let's finish this first. Do we have a motion on the extension of the waiver for teacher licensure?
Second.
Can I amend to add a mid-year report that includes student, or a midway report that includes student achievement information?
Who seconded? Ms. Chambers? Oh, okay. All right, do we need to, since she's amending?
I think just in a confirmation that she would accept that amendment would be, would be fine.
Yes, that'd be great.
And who seconded it?
I think Mr. Sutton made it and then.
Okay, well, Mr. Sutton would have to accept the amendment then, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, and I just wanted to comment. I know that y'all have had a very difficult spring and our thoughts and prayers have been with you. And I know that you've made the best of a horrible situation, but we've really been thinking of you and wish you the best.
Well, we thank you for your support.
Ms. Webb, I had one question for you on this application that we're getting. Since we're, I think, seeing a little bit of a lack of information sometimes as they're coming in for these extensions, could we be more specific maybe in question four?
Sure.
Maybe they, we could, where it says provide data or evidence, could we maybe say provide specific student achievement data? Or how, what would the board suggest there on that fourth question? To maybe we would get a better response on that item?
Yeah, I think it's efficient word to mean to provide evidence. Maybe it's specifically stated to students.
Yes. Right, so that was the reason I said maybe provide student achievement data or evidence or other evidence maybe? I don't know.
Absolutely, we will add that. One other comment I wanted to make was, I know we've heard several comments today about teachers being unable to pass the praxis exam. So there is another option through a micro-credential through the licensure office that they can do if they're close to that score but can't quite reach it. So there are some other options for them.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of that. Any other discussion? I think this would be a good point to break for lunch and then we'll come back and finish up after lunch. It is one o'clock, so how about 1:45? Okay, 1:45.
I think, I think we're all back, so we'll come back in sessions. Um, we have one more item left on our action agenda. Uh, the critical academic licensure shortage areas for this next school year. There they are, okay. We saved the best for last.
I like to think so.
Yes.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair, Commissioner Key, and Secretary Key, I'm sorry, I've been here so long it's... And can I take this off or can I not?
Yes.
Um, so I'm here this afternoon to present to you for your recognition the established critical shortage areas, academic shortage areas for the 21-22 school year. Um, we've established these shortage areas based on the same formula that we've used in the past. It's a supply and demand formula where we take the, on the supply side, how many teachers are preparing for licenses in these areas, in all the areas, and how many initial licenses have been given out in the last year. And then on the demand side, how many classes are being taught by teachers on long-term subs, or ALPs, or how many people are either have retired or are planning to retire in the areas. Then we do a calculation based on that supply and demand, and as you probably saw in the handout, the calculation is done based on a standard of 100, so anything that is less than 100 is considered, the demand is greater than the supply, so that's considered a shortage area. And so for the 21-22 school year, we've established that the shortage areas are art, chemistry, French, library media, mathematics, physics, and special education. And that's really all I have to present. If you have any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Ms. Chambers had some questions.
Thank you. As, as you think about what feels to be an extraordinary year, and even earlier presenter made reference to the number of, I think, retirements or openings they were going to have eclipsed prior five years, maybe added together. So as you think about these, these specific shortage areas, and say you were to look at the last five years and what kind of shortages we were experiencing, and if you were to project forward beyond just 21-22, but if you looked forward over the next five years, could you speak to us about where we sit relative to teacher shortage in general, not even just these specific areas, but the bigger demand-supply challenge that we have?
Sure. Well, honestly, the, the subjects that have most often been considered shortage areas over the last few years are pretty much always the same areas. It's, it's the math, it's the sciences, it's special education. That, that trend has been in effect for 10 years now. I'm not sure what it was like before that, but as long as I've been doing this. And that's, that's not going to change unless we make some changes. Now, I would say that the projection is good because we, in the Office of Educated Effectiveness, have established the Teach Arkansas campaign, and the Office of Recruitment and Retention, and so that office and those personnel are directly addressing some of these specific areas. I'd like to say that the projection for the future is, is good, and that we would be able to maybe alleviate some of these areas as shortages.
Great. So you, well, we have immediate challenge. It's not extraordinary, in your opinion, and, and we have cures or remedies that are in place that should be able to meet the need as we go forward. At least that's what you're seeing.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ms. Wood? Dr. Moore?
I enjoyed the, the math behind this. I've, I've always wondered like how y'all actually came up with it. So I, I appreciated getting to look at that and see it, so it was fun.
You're welcome. There was a few bright minds got together and came up with that formula.
I did have one quick question. I was a little bit surprised that computer science didn't make the list. Do you think with the legislation this year and the impact ongoing on, on the future in high schools, that that will probably change?
I think so. And, and I think that the reason it's not on the list is mostly because there are more people becoming certified in computer science. And as long as we have that push for more, then it probably would not be a shortage area in the future.
Do you think that in the future that we're going to have enough to, to keep it from becoming a shortage? Or do you think it will end up being there? I know you can't predict the future.
I would like to think that it, that it would be enough. I mean, the, the push for computer science in the state of Arkansas is fantastic, and we can see just over the last couple of years, the impact that it's had. I can't see that changing in the future. It's going to get better.
The only challenge I might offer back as an employer of technical people is that you'll be competing with, as you know, business that is also experiencing a shortage. And so thinking about, I don't know if it's salary structure or the things that might make the teaching profession even more appealing as opposed to being drawn off into, into commercial, just something to think about. It's a good problem.
Any other discussion? Do we need to make a motion to accept the report? Okay. We need a motion to accept this report. Or not report, it's...
We need to accept the academic shortage areas.
Okay. Okay, all right. We need a motion to accept these as the academic shortage areas for the 21-22 school year. Okay? Ms. McFetrich?
Second.
Second, Ms. Chambers, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you for your hard work and your great math.
Thank you all.
All right. That is all of our, on the action agenda, and we had one item that we added this morning under new business was the committee for the chair and vice chair for the upcoming school year. And I think I already said all that, but we'll say it again for, for the record. Ms. Dean has volunteered to serve on the committee, and then she asked if, if Dr. Hill and Ms. McFetrich, if you would serve on that committee. Okay. Do we need to do anything, or is that just an appointment that she made?
A vote to approve.
Okay, a vote to approve the committee. Do we need a motion, or, yes, okay.
I move to approve this committee as named.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
I think, I think we're all back, so we'll come back in sessions. We have one more item left on our action agenda, the critical academic licensure shortage areas for this next school year. There they are, okay. We save the best for last.
I like to think so.
Yes.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair, Commissioner Key, and Secretary Key, I'm sorry, I've been here so long it's... And can I take this off or can I not? So I'm here this afternoon to present to you for your recognition the established critical shortage areas, academic shortage areas for the 21-22 school year. We've established these shortage areas based on the same formula that we've used in the past, it's a supply and demand formula, where we take the, on the supply side, how many teachers are preparing for licenses in these areas, in all the areas, and how many initial licenses have been given out in the last year. And then on the demand side, how many classes are being taught by teachers on long-term subs, or ALPs, or how many people are either have retired or are planning to retire in the areas. Then we do a calculation based on that supply and demand, and as you probably saw in the handout, the calculation is done based on a standard of 100, so anything that is less than 100 is considered, the demand is greater than the supply, so that's considered a shortage area. And so for the 21-22 school year, we've established that the shortage areas are art, chemistry, French, library media, mathematics, physics, and special education. And that's really all I have to present, if you have any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Ms. Chambers had some questions.
Thank you. As you think about what feels to be an extraordinary year, and even earlier presenter made reference to the number of, I think, retirements or openings they were going to have eclipsed prior five years, maybe added together. So as you think about these specific shortage areas, and say you were to look at the last five years and what kind of shortages we were experiencing, and if you were to project forward beyond just 21-22, but if you looked forward over the next five years, could you speak to us about where we sit relative to teacher shortage in general, not even just these specific areas, but the bigger demand-supply challenge that we have?
Sure. Well, honestly, the subjects that have most often been considered shortage areas over the last few years are pretty much always the same areas, it's the math, it's the sciences, it's special education. That trend has been in effect for 10 years now, I'm not sure what it was like before that, but as long as I've been doing this. And that's not going to change unless we make some changes. Now, I would say that the projection is good because we in the Office of Educator Effectiveness have established the Teach Arkansas campaign, and the Office of Recruitment and Retention, and so that office and those personnel are directly addressing some of these specific areas. I'd like to say that the projection for the future is good, and that we would be able to maybe alleviate some of these areas as shortages.
Great, so you, well, we have immediate challenge, it's not extraordinary in your opinion, and we have cures or remedies that are in place that should be able to meet the need as we go forward, at least that's what you're seeing.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ms. Wood? Dr. Moore? Just saying, Dr.?
I enjoyed the math behind this, I've always wondered like how y'all actually came up with it, so I appreciated getting to look at that and see it, so it was fun.
You're welcome. There was a few bright minds got together and came up with that formula.
I did have one quick question, I was a little bit surprised that computer science didn't make the list. Do you think with the legislation this year and the impact ongoing on the future in high schools, that will probably change?
I think so, and I think that the reason it's not on the list is mostly because there are more people becoming certified in computer science, and as long as we have that push for more, then it probably would not be a shortage area in the future.
Do you think that in the future that we're going to have enough to keep it from becoming a shortage, or do you think it will end up being there? I know you can't predict the picture.
I would like to think that it would be enough, I mean, the push for computer science in the state of Arkansas is fantastic, and we can see just over the last couple of years the impact that it's had, I can't see that changing in the future, it's going to get better.
Okay. The only challenge I might offer back as an employer of technical people is that you'll be competing with, as you know, business that is also experiencing a shortage, and so thinking about, I don't know if it's salary structure or the things that might make the teaching profession even more appealing as opposed to being drawn off into commercial, just something to think about.
Sure.
It's a good problem.
Any other discussion? Do we need to make a motion to accept the report? Okay. We need a motion to accept this report. Or not report, it's?
To accept the academic shortage areas.
Okay. Okay, all right, we need a motion to accept these as the academic shortage areas for the 21-22 school year. Okay, Ms. McFetrich?
Second.
Second, Ms. Chambers, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you for your hard work and your great math.
Thank you all.
That is all of our, on the action agenda, and we had one item that we added this morning under new business, was the committee for the chair and vice chair for the upcoming school year, and I think I already said all that, but we'll say it again for the record. Ms. Dean has volunteered to serve on the committee, and then she asked if Dr. Hill and Ms. McFetrich, if you would serve on that committee. Do we need to do anything, or is that just an appointment that she made? Okay, a vote to approve the committee. Do we need a motion, or, yes, okay.
I move to approve this committee as named.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? Is there any other new business? Are there any public comments?
No, so there are none.
Okay, all right. So do I need to adjourn this and move to reports, or just move right into reports?
You can move right into reports.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure I'm glad you're sitting up there. Oh, yes, thank you, I told you I was going to do it, and then I already forgot it, okay. All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break to let Ms. Hill get all of her equipment gathered up, so we'll take about five minutes. All right, we're going to move on to the report section of the agenda. The first thing there is state board member reports, does anyone have something you would like to report? No, okay. Next is the ATOY.
All right. This month I'll be pretty brief here, but it's been a fun past month, just because I think a lot of experiences and the different things that have happened have really run a wide range of things, from high school and college students getting to talk with, those students who are considering education as a profession, to getting out with schools, and then also getting to talk with some previous Arkansas Teachers of the Year, and so those will be the three I kind of talked through today. But, you know, with a month or two ago, a couple months ago, I believe, Charlie Krausen talked about the educators rising in Carle, and how that's really coming on, and we've had some regional events that have been, they've been virtual, just because we're talking about different schools coming together, and so we're still, those have still been virtual, but I give a lot of credit to Charlie and on how she's been able to do this, and the different regional coordinators, because pulling off virtual events can be difficult, and they've done a really good job of trying to engage, have something that is fun for students to be a part of with different competitions, and, you know, also just getting to talk. And so yesterday I had the chance to be with kind of the central, north-central Arkansas group, and, you know, talking with those high school students about what it means to be a teacher, and what they get to look forward to if they're considering this, and so that's been a lot of fun. We still have a couple more coming up at the end, well, tomorrow, and so those have been really good. And another thing I wanted to mention, I've been to several different schools and school districts over the past month, but I wanted to highlight two, and what I saw in both of these, both in West Memphis and in the Mayflower district, as I got to go and visit, was I saw opportunities, and I think that was really exciting, you know, with West Memphis, we spent some time over at ASU Mid-South and their partnership of what they've been working on, as far as, there's a lot of different opportunities for students to be plugged in and find something that they're passionate about, and that they can use, you know, learn a skill that they can use right away. So we saw, you know, diesel, we saw welding, we saw hospitality and culinary, and so all these different things that they can be involved in, and so I think that was really neat. And then at Mayflower, had the chance to visit all the campuses there, elementary, middle, and high school, and, you know, this, there's a picture up there with some students that were running a small business, you know, out of a small business class, and they were getting that experience right there in the school to work on that, and, you know, it was just awesome to see that, because when we talk about what education can be, and getting those opportunities earlier and earlier, that you're doing the work right there, and it's more than just, you know, real-world application problems, it's truly real-world experience that you're getting, and I think that was just awesome, the different opportunities in those districts, so shout out to them. And then the last thing I want to share, and Ms. Newton, hey, there you go. We've done a Where Are They Now? ATOY series that we just started talking about, and Educator Effectiveness was, you know, brainstorming on how do we get even more participation with different districts and different schools nominating, and so they've got a whole plan, and I get to be a small part of that, and so we've kind of started working on these videos that we're going to release through social media, we've done one, and this is the second one, since it's State Board Day, I thought, you know, yours should come out today. And so I was going to show just a quick, won't do the whole thing, but just kind of an intro to this, I'll share the sound, hopefully that makes it sound better. I'm Joel Lickadoo, your 2020 Arkansas Teacher of the Year, and this is the Where Are They Now? video series. Featuring previous Arkansas Teachers of the Year, talking about their experiences in the program and the impact it has had on them as they continue to be leaders in education. You can learn more about the Teacher of the Year program by visiting the DESI website.
Hi, I'm Lita Newton, the 2015 Arkansas Teacher of the Year. When I was selected as Teacher of the Year, I was a high school math teacher at Poehn High School in Poehn, Arkansas. The day that I was selected, they gathered all the students in that day, and there were different leaders from across the state that came and surprised me, it was a complete and total surprise.
And the rest of the video will also be a big surprise. You can see that, but it's been fun to just hear the stories of different Teachers of the Year from the past, and so we've got some, I think we have eight right now that I'll be able to put together and have those come out this month, ranging back to 2002 up to just last year. So it's been fun to hear their stories and hear their experiences, and hopefully, you know, continue to highlight the program just for the sake of celebrating teachers and celebrating excellence, and I think that's what I hope districts and teachers see, is that not only are these teachers being celebrated for what they've done, but they continue to be leaders in education, and they continue that path, and the experiences they bring back, and I think that's been inspiring to me to learn from their stories, and so hopefully it can do the same for others, but, so thank you, Ms. Newton, for putting that out there. And, yeah, that's what I've got today.
Thank you, and I can testify that the ATOY experience is a life-changing experience, because there's no way that I would have ever imagined being in a math classroom and then ending up here, there's no way I could have ever even remotely ever figured that path out, and so it definitely was life-changing for me, and feel very honored to have been in that position. Okay, we're going to move on to the commissioner's report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, a number of things that I want to give you all updates on today. First, I'll start, last month I told you that I would have a little bit more information to give you regarding where we stood in the legislative session and some of the bills that we've had. We've had a very successful session so far, most of our bills have either become law or are within just a few steps of that, so just hitting some of the high points here, our right to read, the modifications there, that's now Act 489. The Minority Teacher and Administrator Recruitment and Retention Plan, if y'all remember, that used to be a very compliance-focused report and plan that was submitted on an annual basis. We have made that to where it truly can be used as a plan now, and through a three-year cycle, and it has passed both the House and the Senate, and it's at the governor's desk awaiting his signature, as is the Teacher Salary Equalization Act, that will go a long way towards helping repair or fill in that gap, disparity between the higher-paying districts and the lower-paying districts in the state. The modifications to our school choice bill, or act, is now Act 490, I think that will help certainly when it comes to school choice appeals, and maybe reduce the number of appeals that actually come to y'all. Educational New Zones, the changes to that structure and the focus of the ERZs is now Act 134. Kind of a leftover from last session, rulemaking authority for the counseling bill that we passed, you will be seen spring forward rules on that now that we have the authority, that's Act 85. Computer science as a graduation credit, that has now passed and is Act 414, we're really excited about that. We're not the first state that has that requirement, but I think we're the first state that has the most meaningful requirement for computer science graduation credit. Career coaches, again, I think this is, I've said it before, a bill that, and a program that can have one of the longest-lasting and widest impacts on the success of our students, and that has passed and is now awaiting the governor's signature. And something I just want to brag on Dr. Pfeffer for the hard work that she did on this, on ESA funding, from concept to completion, that is now Act 322. I'm really sad that because of COVID, we didn't have the number of bill signing ceremonies that we usually have in a normal session, would have really liked Dr. Pfeffer to have gotten a signing pen for that one, because she put so much work into it, but, and I think as far as the $220-plus million that is distributed in ESA funding across the state each year, this, the new way of looking at planning for how to use ESA funds is going to really impact students around the state. So just a few of those, we do have some bills that, you know, are continuing through the process, but at this point, most of the bills we see being filed are member bills, not bills that are sponsored by agencies, and so we're keeping an eye, obviously, on all of those bills that get filed. I don't have anything other than speculation, so I won't share speculation on when the session might end, but we do expect that there will be a concluding point, or I guess not conclusion, but they'll pause, maybe in a week or two, maybe three, not sure, and recess, because there's still a lot of work to do, they have constitutional amendments that they have not acted upon, and the biggest thing that's out there is redistricting of the congressional districts, that must be done, so they will plan to come back, I think, to tackle that sometime later this year. The most important thing right now that we're awaiting is the passage of the Budget and Revenue Stabilization Act, so that work and those negotiations are ongoing, and obviously fiscal year ends June 30th, so we fully anticipate a budget will be passed, plenty of time for that deadline. All right, before I move to the next topic, any questions on the session?
The reading bill, was there anything significant in the reading bill that just really stood out this time, because I, you hear about reading a lot, but anything that you think will be really?
Our bill, there was, that's a good question, I'm glad you asked that, our bill, the biggest part of the Act 49 was to give an extension of the timeline for teachers to become proficient or demonstrate proficiency. When we lost a year, really more than a year, of opportunities for training, then we had a deadline for teachers after which they could no longer be employed in those settings, that we felt it was very necessary to give them that extension. But another bill that passed that was not a department bill, but Senator Clark had legislation, and I think the thing that will impact us the most is that it requires a department to hire an ombudsman, and that ombudsman will be responsible for working with districts, working with parents, investigating complaints, reporting to you all and to me as far as the work and any things that they see that might be necessary for us to tighten up on. But I think this is just another session where, and the other component of that bill was that the three-queuing system, the part of the reading philosophy of instructing students on how to read, that was part of the whole language, part of balanced literacy, you know, that sort of thing, that was a key component of that. That law also says districts may not use a program that has that as the chief strategy. So really tightening up to make sure science of reading is the way we teach reading in Arkansas. Did I get all that pretty close to right? I'm looking for my expert up there to give me a nod to make sure I didn't say anything wrong on that. Yes?
Is there any way maybe after this summer, maybe early fall, that we could get some sort of report on progress of rise as far as teachers getting trained, and how districts are doing as far as implementation of good curriculum and that sort of thing? I know this has been a terrible year, but maybe by fall we would be able to get a picture of kind of where we're at as far as training and curriculum?
Yes, I think that's something we certainly can do, and it's also relevant to the focus on the recovering lost learning, the S3 funds, a significant portion of those funds at the local level have to be reserved or dedicated to lost learning. Certainly, we believe part of that is accelerating their either adoption, or their training, or their implementation of the right instructional programs and instructional materials, so I'll get with Dr. Pride and with Ms. Smith, and we'll make sure we have something for y'all later on in the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions on the session, I will move, and I'm not sure which one is next, I think, Dan, do we have our slide for, okay, I'll go with that one first, and that's, okay, that's the first one, all right. Okay, so what you see here on the screen is a campaign that we have started, and the, for the first time ever, we have the opportunity for students to take career and technical education classes for which they can receive weighted credit. This is something that, 2019 session, there was legislation passed, and as you know, students who are interested in competing for honors graduate or the high GPAs, CTE-focused areas were at a disadvantage. or the high GPAs, CTE-focused areas were at a disadvantage because they were typically graded on the four-point scale and didn't have the opportunity like your AP classes and others to be on that five-point scale. So you could be a top student in CTE, but your GPA would be lower than a student that may have only focused on the AP areas. So we now have 31 workforce-focused courses that have high standards of rigor, high standards of scholarly demands that are available for students for the next school year. And so we've had a team that has been working very hard on this. The campaign started March 29th, and it will run through the middle of May. We have teachers, counselors, students, parents, business and industry, because that's something we've heard from business and industry is, this is a gap, can y'all do something about that? And so we have. And I want to recognize some of the team members that have been very instrumental in making this happen. Anthony Olin, Morgan Warbington, Adam Musto, Andrea Fortner, Gail Morris, who...
There she is.
There she is, okay. Gordon Eichelberger, Patricia Graves, and Sonya Wright McMurray. I want to point to this as a win for transformation because, you know, in 2019, we had, we were just moving into that, what transformation would look like, where CTE and ADE-K-12, all these entities came under the umbrella of the larger Department of Education. And as a result of that move, it's a lot easier for everyone to get together and work together. And now students have 31 courses that they have the opportunity to take for weighted credit in the CTE areas. Yes, ma'am?
Secretary Key, do those result then in some industry-recognized credential?
I believe some, if not all of them do, but Dr. Pfeffer, do you have a detail on that?
So I'll answer, but we may want to pull back up where Patricia's here from CTE, and then we also have Gordon, I know is online, but, so the individual courses don't necessarily lead to the industry-recognized credential, but these courses are part of pathways. And so, and when you look at every course, it may be that there are multiple courses within a pathway that are approved for the weighted credit, or it may be that a course within that, but as part of that pathway leading to an industry-recognized certification. I think that, so Gordon, the courses that are approved as case courses, can you just give a little bit more information about that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So in agricultural education, we have three courses through case that are, been approved as weighted credit, and those are Case Animal Science, Case Plant Science, and Case Natural Resources. The case curriculum provides an abundant amounts of science and/or math integrated into hands-on activities or labs, and these are part of pathways, whether it be our animal systems pathway, plant systems pathway, or natural resources. And correct, they do end in some sort of certification for each one of those pathways.
And also, with those courses specifically, there's also, because of their alignment with the science, that's where the partnership, like Secretary Key talked about, the importance of transformation and the partnerships with, like, CTE and the Division of Learning Services. So you have courses that can count, not just for an elective credit, but maybe for a science credit or math. I'm trying to think what else on that list, the credits that can be earned in addition to just it being a weighted credit.
Correct. The ag-powered technology also counts as a math elective, and the Case Plant Science, Natural Resources, and Animal Science count as a science elective for students. So they're able to get weighted credit, get a CTE credit towards being a completer or concentrator, as well as an elective credit towards graduation.
Thank you. Congratulations, such a big deal. And the more you can continue to draw employers in so that these are recognized badges or credentials or micro-credentials that these students can be hired for, that's just another win on top of what you're already doing, but well done.
And do you care, Secretary Key?
Well, no, I did not look at the screen to see that Gordon and Adam and Anthony and everyone is here. I did see Patricia walk in, but anyway, yeah, let's take a moment...
Yeah, I just wanted, because, Gord, you may not know some of these team members because of, you know, with CTE kind of newly joining our family here, and you're going to see a lot more of our CTE group in the months to come. They're going to have rules to bring to you, they're going to have more and more exciting courses and things, so. But yes, Adam is, works in our STEM area, and I don't want to get their actual titles wrong, so I'm just going to be vague and they can jump in, but Adam works with our STEM. He works really closely with Anthony's team, obviously, with that kind of work. So you've met Gordon, and Sonya is on there, Sonya Wright McMurray. She is the Associate Director there and Leader of these great groups. And so then we have Patricia. Patricia is here, and Patricia, you're pretty new to CTE team, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And she was able to just come over. She's helped with pulling all this together. And the team that we introduced, is Morgan on here, Anthony?
Morgan is watching live stream. I'll be glad to bring her in, she can get on my camera.
Okay, so, and Morgan Warbington, what I'm excited about is Morgan and Adam in this communication project and working with Patricia, they created social media, customizable social media for school districts to be able to share out to students and parents, so they would actually see on their social media with their school mascot and their school name. So just lots of creative stuff, but if Gail will come up here just for a second too, because it doesn't matter how much great work we do if nobody knows about it.
That's right.
And so all of the people that have worked, and this includes even, this includes, you know, many more people, this was really the team that pulled everything together to help with the communications piece. But of course, Gail was our chief communication, pulled her together and with a lot of different layers, so I just want to recognize her and let her leave off anything, or make sure I didn't leave anything out.
Okay, well, hi. My name is Gail Morris, and I'm the Communications Manager in our Strategic Communications Team. And the first thing about the whole campaign is, it's free. We create the graphics. As a matter of fact, my teammate Kevin Briggs and I were working on an animated piece for social media. So we do all the filming, all the editing, so we'll have some static graphic pieces as well as some videos to go to support this, that we push out every day or so. As well, we had an article in Sunday's Democrat Gazette, page 2B, which was good. And so we're looking at getting this message out into other education association newsletters as well as with the State Chamber of Commerce. So we've got a lot of things going, a lot of product. And I think the important piece is that bringing two groups together, we were able to all kind of come together and share the same language and create a plan that we could all support and be happy with. So that was really exciting and different. And to make sure we're all using the same language and driving home the same points. So we're reaching out to a lot of different places, and like I said, at no extra cost, we do everything here on our side in-house. So that saves a lot of money in terms of graphics and designing and video editing and animation. So we're excited to move forward.
And I did forget one person, I think, hopefully, it was only one, Andrea Fortner, who is our Lead for our Counseling Unit, obviously. This is going to be successful when you have a really good counselor who's helping to make sure students know about the opportunities. And so she's been part of that group in helping to craft a message for parents and for school administrators and counselors. So, you know, it's going to take a little while too to add to course offerings for students, but we're really excited, so anyway. Hope I've got all of, got everybody covered, but I do appreciate everyone.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. Any questions, any other questions on that?
It's not inappropriate, again, just to say, I'm on, I've mentioned this in previous meetings, I'm on several boards in Kansas City, that area, that are trying to do this, and Arkansas is ahead. What you're doing is, I think, really leading where a lot of states and institutions are trying to go. And just want to acknowledge all the teams on here. Congratulations and thank you for what you're doing. It's meeting a very big need in a very important way.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chambers. It's important to know that CT courses are equal in the potential and the opportunity that it has for students as your, what we used to think of as college prep. Because there, that once clear line between college and careers is no longer clear. It's not even a line anymore, I mean, it's just not there. So we want our parents and our teachers and our counselors especially to understand that there's not a less-than path. It is, they are all, they should all be equal paths to student success, and if we're going to have a competitive nature, which that's our nature, is to be in competition, we don't want, you know, students that have an interest in this to be at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to GPA. So I'm really proud of the team for making this happen. The next item that I want to talk about quickly is, as you know, our focus the last several years on PLC process and high-reliability schools and high-reliability teachers. And I want to congratulate the 25 teachers that were recently selected for the Cohort Two of the High Reliability Teacher Initiative. So, don't know if, Dr. Pfeffer, if you wanted to say anything about that, but we, oh, there's Missy right there. Okay, I keep, I keep looking for folks and I forget to look, to watch the door. So, Dr. Missy Wally...
Oh, wow, congratulations.
Since you last heard from her.
Thank you. The best part about doctors is it's done. And I don't know if the slide, do we have the slides with the, do you know? We do have 25 teachers who were just accepted into the next round of Cohort Two for the High Reliability Teacher Certification, and we have 15 in the first cohort, and they are going into their second course of Level One of the High Reliability Schools Framework. And what that entails is basically, they are submitting videos of themselves, they are providing their instructional model, and they're receiving feedback from that. And so they're receiving coaching. And just from the words of one of the teachers, her quote is, "The best PD she's ever been through." Because she's going through and she is practicing in her classroom and taking surveys from her students and pretty much reflecting on their student voice. And then she submits her lessons and her videos to Marzano's Resource, and they provide her feedback. And why don't you consider this, why don't you consider that? And then she changes it, or he changes it, and they resubmit it until they get to that course. And so we had 25 this time, well, actually, it's 27. We ended up taking a couple more afterwards. So we have 27 going through this time. So it's exciting, and it's been some really good feedback for the teachers, and I'm really proud of them, so. And they're from all over the state.
I don't know. I don't know if you wanted to, highly effective schools or...
We'll save that. Yeah, we, I know we've got some members who are going to have to leave at 3:00, and there's three pretty important topics. So that's all that I have. And I think the next thing we have is an update from the Arkansas Leadership Academy. I know that that team, Dr. White, Dr. Bradley, Mr. Smith, they're entering the door now. There they are. You all have the presentation, a hard copy's been distributed and it's linked, so I would just invite, not sure who's leading that, but would invite them to come and just, so we can hear from them on this report.
We have your report, and we're very impressed, and so maybe you give us the highlights and we'll have some questions.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the State Board, and may it please the Board, my name's Scott Smith, I'm the Director of the Public School Resource Center, and thank you for letting us come before you today to give you this transitional update on the Leadership Academy. As you know, these are our partners involved in this project with the Public School Resource Center, Arkansas State University, and Edutals with the University of Oklahoma. Just let me tell you, we've been very busy since we last came before you in December. And I would like to introduce a couple of the folks that are with us with each group today. So along with myself is Melody Morgan, she is our Director of Educational Assessment, Accountability, Curriculum, and Instruction. Ken Rich is our Director of School Finance. And with Arkansas State University, we're very privileged to have Dr. Mary Jane Bradley with the Dean of the College of Education. And with Edutals, Dr. Carrie White, who's the Director of Engagement and Public Service. These are the topics we're going to cover today. I'm not going to go over theirs, but before I hand it over to Dr. White, I also wanted to comment and just thank Dr. Steve Detmore with the University of Arkansas College of Education, Randy Massonelli, and Melissa Russ from the U of A Systems Office. They've been very helpful in getting access to various records and documents. And I would like to also thank that current ALA staff, those members who've been helpful to us in getting records and documents as we try to transition this process. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. White and kind of let her lead our presentation.
Thank you all so much for the opportunity to come back and give you this update. As Mr. Smith said, it has been a whirlwind of a few months since we were last with you. As you know, we're getting ready for the transition year to begin July 1, so there's a lot of details that have to be worked out between now and then. So I'm going to walk us through kind of a timeline of some of the milestones that we've had in several different categories over the last few months. In December, following your selection of us as the new operator, there was a 14-day protest period that led right into the holidays, followed by about a month of procurement processing where the contract was signed and such. And so during that period of time, we primarily just had internal planning meetings and meetings with DESI team members. In these categories of preparation and planning, we are now in the middle of operations infrastructure work and getting ready to identify governance committee members, all the while doing some internal strategic planning and performance management processes. We're trying to practice what we preach, Secretary. At the end of January 1st of February, we launched our information gathering phase, meeting with key stakeholders to learn about what has been working well, what maybe could be improved upon, and what the most pressing leadership development needs are. In a few minutes, I'll share some of the specific feedback we've received from those. One of the first stakeholder groups we met with was the current ALA staff. We sought information about current cohorts and institutes, details that just weren't publicly available during the RFP process. And we are, so our primary purpose was to set up the stage for the smooth transition of those who are in the Master Principal Program and other multi-year programs of the ALA. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, several of those staff members have continued to be very helpful to us in that process. Going forward, we will have multimodal feedback loops to ensure that stakeholder voice continues to be a part of our service as the ALA provider. In the category of communication and outreach, it was also in February that we began sharing initial messages with current participants. We provided several different personalized video messages for different groups, different cohorts. These were shared at institutes and via email if we had access to their email addresses. In March, we launched a widespread communication effort, including a transition webpage with an overview video message and a series of virtual discussions entitled Conversations with the New ALA, and I'll share more about that in just a few moments. The transition webpage on the APSRC website does introduce our partnership. It provides details about the transition, allows visitors to submit questions and comments, offers an opportunity to become an ALA ambassador, and we've had a few people already say, what can we do to help? They want to be that ambassador. And includes event information. The webpage will continue to be updated... It includes event information. The webpage will continue to be updated often as more details become available, but since its launch in mid-March, there have already been over 700 page views. And in our final category throughout the spring, we've been finalizing the structure and format for our professional learning plans, focusing on that smooth transition for those who are in the Master Principal Program and other multi-year ALA programs. So, I'd like to invite Dr. Bradley to come and share about some of those plans specifically as they relate to the Master Principal Program.
Thank you, Carrie. Good afternoon, and I too. I'm very excited to be here and I want to say thank you for your time, time today. Where is the, okay, look it up. I want to share with you our progress on the Master Principal Program. With the current leader of the Master Principal Program, we made a plan for determining who in the current Phase One and Phase Two would be ready to move on to the next phase of the Master Principal. In the month of May, the current operator will be assessing the participant portfolios, documenting their progress during this current year. We will take the recommendations of the current operator regarding who is ready to move to the next phase. We will communicate to those who are ready to move to the next phase to find out what their intentions will be, whether they want to move on or not. We will also work with the individuals who were deemed to not move forward and help them with a personalized, appropriate support to move forward. One thing we learned since December is that most of the participants of the Phase One Master Principal Program Cohort have already been selected as a part of a separate initiative for first-year principals with prior administrative experience. As we met with various stakeholders, we gleaned additional insight into the profile of the ideal ALA graduate profile. We identified what completers should know, believe and value, do, and share and serve. We recognized what we needed to retain from the current program when we moved forward. We also conducted a gap analysis of the components when we're trying to design the Master Principal Program to move forward. Before communicating with specific dates, times, and locations for our professional sessions, we felt like we needed to align our content, delivery mechanisms, our availability of national subject experts, and our local experts before we share that with our transition participants. We have just about finalized all of that information, including even the event space organization. So, we will be able to announce dates very soon. I'll let Dr. White explain the delivery plan for the ALA. Carrie.
Thank you. As you probably remember, in addition to the traditional programs of the ALA that require a one, two, or three-year commitment, we also proposed ALA Reach, which has a variety of offerings that require no long-term commitments. These allow educational leaders and aspiring leaders in Arkansas to lean in and lean out as their schedules allow. This is an early version of the ALA Reach Delivery Plan, and no, I don't expect you to be able to read all those post-it notes, but it is designed as a high-level calendar view of the types of services that we intend to offer. Now that we have received feedback from a wide range of stakeholders, which will be sharing some of those momentarily, we'll be updating and revising this plan to incorporate the specific topics that they've identified as critical needs for this upcoming school year. Notably, we will be incorporating student voice, educator voice, and community voice as topics throughout ALA Reach and other programs. I'm going to zoom in on August and September, just so we can see a little bit closer view of what we might be offering. In yellow, we have what I call the bread and butter of ALA Reach, which is a bimonthly online community of practice that allows educators to explore educational topics in leadership, as well as for local Arkansas educators to bring their own problems of practice or case studies that they would like to get input from other colleagues that are part of the community. In blue, we have foundational webinars, including panels of national subject matter experts and authors who can provide the evidence on effective practices. In pink, we have a year-long topical series on a topic of critical importance that we'll be making our final selection now that we've got some input from stakeholders. And then in gray, we have our short series, which will be related to emerging topics that come up throughout the course of the year. And then finally, in green, we have regional gatherings so that leaders and aspiring leaders can meet face-to-face to discuss how they're turning theory into practice. So, based on some of the feedback that we've gotten, one of the ideas that we are exploring is to have that year-long topical series delivered kind of like a Netflix series, where several episodes drop at once at the beginning of the quarter. Educators can watch them or binge them at their own schedule and then meet together face-to-face regionally or locally to have discussions about what they're learning and how they're applying it in their context. I'd like to share with you some of that specific feedback that we have received from stakeholders. We've been invited to attend several of the ALA institutes as guests to answer questions and provide information directly related to the involvement of those current participants. We've been making these visits over the last couple of weeks and we'll do that through June. Feedback from current participants has centered around aspects of the ALA that have resulted in both personal and professional value, as well as how they hope to give back to upcoming cohorts. We've also held more than 30 individual and small group conversations with a variety of stakeholders, including superintendents who regularly send participants to the ALA, co-op directors, subject matter experts, and several leaders who represent statewide organizations or potential external partners. Input has centered around barriers to participation in the past, aspects of the ALA that have resulted in individual, district-level, or regional growth, and potential partnerships. On March 30th and April 1st, we hosted six Zoom opportunities for Arkansas educational leaders to learn about the vision for the new ALA while providing input on leadership development topics of greatest priority, barriers to their participation, and what they see as opportunities for the ALA. 190 people participated in these sessions and a recording is available on our transition webpage. Oh, we, okay. It looks like some of the pieces of data on this slide did not transfer over. So, let me just quickly describe what we've got on the slide. About 60% of the attendees of Conversations With The New ALA were from school buildings, so teachers, principals, and assistant principals. As you can see there, a good chunk of those were classroom teachers or teacher leaders, which is incredibly exciting. About a fourth were from district office. And then the other 12% represented a variety of other aspects of the education system. So, that's some of the data points that aren't showing up for you there, higher ed, co-ops, et cetera. The vast majority of those who responded to the poll on these webinars were not currently involved in the ALA. About half had previously been involved in one or more ways. And we've heard from several of those former ALA completers that they're looking forward to re-engaging, giving back to new leaders, and building wider networks of support. Current participants have already asked how they can stay connected and give back to the next generation of leaders through our program. And we are very encouraged by the 60 at the top, the 60 participants of Conversations With The New ALA who have no prior experience with the Arkansas Leadership Academy. Because as you know, that one of our intentions is to broaden access to the ALA. Participants in these conversations identified key leadership development priorities, which we will use to inform those ALA Reach plans for the upcoming year. Some of those top priorities were foundations of collaborative leadership and collective efficacy, instructional leadership, understanding and leading change, how to be a collaborative leader and a transformative leader, selecting and implementing effective instructional practices, student success and school culture, resilience and social-emotional learning, culturally responsive teaching, coaching for equity and impact, and instructional leadership teams, using data, protocols, processes, and routines for results, engaging and motivating students face-to-face and virtually, not a surprise, feedback and coaching for impact, and stakeholder voice, which included student voice. Participants also identified barriers to participation in prior years, which could be barriers to participation in the future if not addressed. These included not knowing that the ALA existed, extensive time away from family and school, and costs. One person commented that the new ALA Reach might remove barriers that have existed because of its flexibility. As we move toward implementation this summer, we have identified several immediate next steps. As we've stated, our top priority is the smooth transition for those already in a multi-year program, specifically those in the Master Principal Program or in the pipeline to participate in Master Principal. So, as Dr. Bradley mentioned, dates, locations, and other details will be sent to them just as soon as possible. The new ALA Reach services are scheduled to launch in August, so we'll be releasing the first few months of that schedule very soon. And our plan is to have new cohorts begin later in the school year once the current cohorts are well-established. We know that during this upcoming transition year, we will not be able to fully realize all of our long-term vision, partly because of the need for that smooth transition for those who are used to how things operate. And we know that there are likely to be lessons learned and adjustments needed throughout the process. So, we'll be modeling the planned due check continuous cycle of inquiry. And we appreciate your support as we all learn together through that process. Transitioning current participants and onboarding new participants into the long-term programs will include signed agreements of understanding about the expectations for the participants, for their districts or organizations, and for us as providers. This will serve as a measure of accountability regarding the rigor of the programs and expectations for how we'll all relate to one another. These agreements will be sent to those already in the pipeline just as soon as we possibly can so we know how many are planning to continue forward with us. We're also in the process of posting job descriptions and notices for the Master Principal Program Director, an administrative assistant to support that role, a project coordinator to help with all aspects of the ALA, and contract-based coaches and consultants to support participants of the Master Principal Program and other ALA programs and experiences. These were all described in our staffing and delivery plan. In the coming months, we will continue seeking input from stakeholders, reaching out to those who have expressed an interest in active involvement, and engaging ALA Governance Committee members. We will continue to update the transition webpage with FAQs and other details. And the transition page will transfer over to a fully functioning website once we acquire the URL in July. In the meantime, you can reach us and any one of our team members using the email address, phone number, or small, short URL on the screen. And of course, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. That was very thorough and I can tell y'all haven't slept a lot in the last few weeks. So, great job. Dr. Hill, do you have any questions? Ms. Chambers? Dr. Moore?
Thank you all for being here today. On the Master Principal Program, how many participants are in it now? What does that look like?
The cohorts tend to have around 35 to 40 when they begin, but the cohorts tend to dwindle over time. So, off the top of my head, I want to say it's 34, 20, 36, but I'm not positive of that. So, don't, I probably shouldn't have even said those numbers out loud. And then there are, I believe, 28 or 29 that are in the group that will be coming into Phase One as the first cohort.
Okay. So, how were they selected to come into it before?
So, that, I am certainly not the expert on. I know that's a partnership with the department and AAEA. I know they are first-year, first-year principals who have many years of experience as administrators. That's really the extent of what I know on that piece.
So, then from there, do y'all, in the future, will y'all have different requirements for who's selected into that program?
The law requires that they have to have one full year of being a principal before they are eligible and that they are to be representative of the state. So, how we get to representative of the state, I think, is flexible. Our desire is to have representation from all regions of the state, as well as demographic representation. And then the, part of the application process that we intend to include is a lot around motivation. What are your professional development goals? How do you see this fitting in with your long-term trajectory?
Okay. That, I'm certain that y'all are working very hard and there are road bumps as you transition from one program to another, but I appreciate y'all providing us this update and look forward to hearing how things are going as y'all continue on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Lookit?
So, when you talk about some of the current institutes and things that the ALA has going on, but then I'm only hearing about the Master Principal. Is there any plan for any of the other things that they're doing? Or is ALA Reach the, is that what it's going to be?
Excellent question. And since we did not go back and give the big overview of the entire plan, just focusing on those that we're transitioning, I totally understand where that confusion is coming from. So, our focus in the transition at the beginning is on the Master Principal Program, because that is a multi-year program that those administrators are a part of, and then launching ALA Reach. As we described in our proposal, we will have a variety of other options, including the teacher leader program, the instructional leader program, the school team empowerment program, executive leader and policy leader empowerment, and which one am I missing? Oh, Master Principal, that's the fifth one. So, I'm like, there's five. So, all of those will be part of the program going forward. Because the school team empowerment is a multi-year program, it will be one of our early implemented pieces. We want to make sure that those that are in the school team, the current team institute have the ability to go into school team empowerment if they so choose. But then we'll be starting new cohorts of those other programs later in the year. And the other current programs that the ALA is offering are not multi-year. And so, there is no one that is expecting to transition over directly from those. So, we're pushing those a little bit farther into the school year to make sure that we've really established the Master Principal.
And then, you know, when I see that ALA Reach and thinking about teacher leadership and some of the other ones, and my, what I get worried about a little bit is the emphasis on the virtual component, just because of, we know how difficult that is to really be engaging. And even you said, you know, one of the barriers, I think, is that commitment. It can be tough to say, you know, "We're here for the whole year and we're going to be..." But to me, one of the worries of being able to come in and out is the same we've seen with students of, well, they do a little bit here, they don't do a little bit here, and like, how much are we really gaining from doing that? And then, you know, for me, having gone through teacher leadership or doing that, I think one of the biggest components of that that I have gained is that networking piece and that relational piece that I think is really hard to do virtually. Even in, we can do breakout sessions, we can do that, it's just, it's just not quite the same. So, I would hope as that planning continues to evolve, that that is really an emphasis on how do we build that networking piece and keep that going.
Yeah. And obviously, it's about striking the right balance, right? We know that face-to-face is incredibly important in developing deep relationships. We also know that it's incredibly important to have people who are, who are expert facilitators of virtual learning. And so, that's one of the things that our team brings to the table, is our expertise in virtual learning facilitation, adult learning facilitation. So, we will be designing anything that is virtual in a way that the focus is getting to, that trust-building, relationship-building, so that deep networks can occur. But we also know that face-to-face is an important piece of that. And so, we want to be clear, in fact, unfortunately, I think there's been some misinformation around the virtual piece, that we are not abandoning face-to-face by any stretch of the imagination. We incredibly value what happens when you're on break and when you're sitting around the fire and when you've got time in the evening that you're relaxing. And so, those will definitely be components of our, those long-term commitment pieces going forward. And then on the ALA Reach side, we will be building in the local and regional face-to-face opportunities so that when people connect virtually, they already know some of those others who are in the virtual environment.
Thank you. I am excited that the Leadership Academy is going to be able to be more accessible to people all across the state, no matter where they are, what district they're in, how well off the district is. I'm just really excited about all components of it. I especially am about the REACH. I just think, I can see where a principal could take one of these topicals and use it like, in my day, it was a book study that everybody did together, but this could be something that a principal could do with his staff. And then being able to take that and then gather quarterly with other groups from around your area or around your co-op area. So I'm very excited about it and in all the different institutes. So, you know, we're getting there. I know it's going to take time. And I hope people will be patient during this first year, because it is a transition year. But I'm excited about the opportunities for educators across the state.
Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have a comment or a question before we move on? Okay, thank y'all very much. Maybe you can, about December, get some sleep.
All right. Our next report is from Ms. Kaufman. And she gave us a quick report on the accountability and Essa Plan.
Thank you, Secretary Key. If Ms. Smith is in the room?
She is.
I think she was going to start with a assessment update, and then I will add in the last part.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, so assessment started this Monday, and so it's up and rolling. We've had a lot of students already logged in, taking the test. I actually talked to a superintendent yesterday that said that they did not... Typically, what you see is people waiting and not testing the first week. But he said that they wanted to start testing as early as possible. Said he already had ninety-five percent of his elementary students tested. His high school was about ninety percent. And they were very confident, because since they tested early, that they can spend the rest of their time trying to reach out and get those, and get kids, and identify kids. There was an article in the paper this week by Cynthia Howell that actually kind of highlighted and featured some different assessment strategies that districts were using. You see districts actually testing on Saturday or in the evenings to try to provide that confidence for parents that school is a safe place to come and to test. Testing in different cohorts. So it's a little bit different in every school district. But that's what we committed to when we said we wanted to test, and we wanted to test as many kids as we could. And we wanted to provide the flexibilities to schools to do a good job, okay? And to make sure people were safe. And so at this point, we've not asked for a waiver of the ninety-five percent. We feel like we probably will ask for that waiver, and Deb will get into that a little bit more. But we've been given permission to go ahead and start our testing, and let's see what we do, okay? So somebody's trying to call me, let me hang up on them. So we feel like we're in a pretty good place, okay? Deb, do you want to add to that, kind of on the conversation with the US Department of Ed?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Smith. We did have a conversation with the US Department of Education, because as you know, we did submit an addendum asking, you know, to skip the 2020 school year and just move forward with our accountability system. We have been in consultation with the US Department of Ed. And because we believe that our schoolteachers, our administrators, our parents, everyone has worked so hard and through much flexibility, as Ms. Smith has described, we believe that we will be able to assess a good majority of Arkansas students. And so we have requested to be able to have a little time to really see what the data provides to us and then to request the appropriate addendum and/or waivers as needed based on our data. US Department of Ed was very excited about that, very encouraged by what we are doing. And so I'll be bringing information to our Essa Steering Committee at the end of the month. And we'll be watching our data coming in about how many students are actually completing the assessments.
Okay.
Y'all did an excellent job then.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And Stacy's here to give you a report on Level Five districts. This count, this is our normal scheduled time for this, so just let Stacy take it away.
I will give you a heads up, so I had my second vaccine, my shot, yesterday. And so this morning, I was sitting over in committee, and apparently I was moaning and didn't know it. Erin Franks looked at me and said, "Are you okay? What's going on?" And I thought, "What's going on?" So I am feeling it right now, so I'm going to bring on the energy. But if I moan at some point, you just ignore it, okay? All right, is that fair? Okay, so Level Five reports were on the agenda. I'm not going to read the reports to you, but I do want to always bring your attention to, when you're looking at the legislative report, underneath where it says ADE DESI Support Plan, you'll see the word "current." And that's the most current support that we provided those districts in the past three months, okay? So if you're looking for which link to click on and which one's the one that probably will get you the information you need, it's that current plan. I did put together a very short presentation just to kind of hit on some of the highlights, to draw your attention to some of those pieces, because I feel like that's kind of what you want to hear. What are the big pieces that we need to know? What are the concerns? What's going well? So let's first talk about Earl. In their interim data, from the beginning of the year to the third quarter, we've seen a huge increase in the number of students participating in the interim data. We've also seen some positive results in those data pieces. We still do feel like, and this isn't just for Earl, it's statewide, that our assessment scores are going to take a hit, okay? We do feel like there's been learning loss this year in different areas. But we are, we feel good about the number of students who are participating, the number of students, and just what we're seeing there, okay? As compared to the beginning of the year, getting students back in school. At the elementary level, earlier this year, we saw a significant issue with communication between administration and teachers in the school. That has improved significantly. There seems to be a collaboration piece that's on board now, so we're laying that foundational piece. We also have Dr. Watson, who is in Earl frequently. He is part of our team, and he works on PBIS, which is that Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. And Earl has set up a complete reward system within their PBIS. And it's functioning at a pretty high level at this point, so very proud of that work. Another thing that Tish is really working on, or Ms. Knowles, the superintendent, is the climate and culture and the communication piece with the community, okay? Ms. Knowles has done a consistent job of continuing to have community advisory meetings, updating the community where they are. She had a parent meeting with high school students, with high school parents, and they had a really good turnout about how important the state assessment is and showing up, being present, and being part of that. So I think those are all good signs. Continuing work in Earl. We continue to look at their fiscal distress plan. One thing that is different in all of the reports on districts that are in fiscal distress is we have created new fiscal distress plans that have very specific objectives that they have to meet. So before, we kind of had a broad plan. This was narrowing it down on specific actions that need to occur with data being uploaded. So if you look at the fiscal distress plan that's linked in, you're not going to see a lot of information in there, but you'll see the actions and the specific objectives that we're working on. We're working on a new salary schedule within Earl, so they can get to that minimum teacher salary that's required for the next year. Also, working still on curriculum consistency from classroom to classroom and making sure that they're utilizing the curriculum that they have, right? They have identified essential standards. We now want to make sure that their curriculum is aligned and that everybody is consistent in that. So those classroom walkthroughs and consistency pieces are really important within that district. They are collaborating with Solution Tree, and Solution Tree is also helping monitor the instruction in the classroom and getting it to the level it needs to be. As far as the financial piece for Earl, and I had told Commissioner Key this, I was talking to a friend about budgets, and he said to me, "Watch your pennies and the dollars will take care of themselves." And I'm sure some of you've heard that saying before, right? And so it just kind of hit me, we got to go back and we got to dig into the penny level. And in all the districts, we have made penny-level spreadsheets from who the teacher is, what the pay is, what are they doing, what are they licensed at? Does it meet the standards? Is it above the standards? And what budget is it coming out of? And so about two months ago, I'm sure there were many people who wanted to kick me out of my position. But I think we've kind of gone through this cycle. We're getting to a point right now where people are saying, "Oh, wait, we need to make some shifts here. We need to make some decisions here." Mr. Hoy's done a great job working with his two districts on creating that five-year projection of where we are and how much money we're actually spending out of operating for salaries and teachers. And so we're having some really good discussions right now about what is needed for the fiscal responsibility for Earl to make it long-term. We don't get the finances right, then we will be having a different conversation about Earl. But we're confident that we can get that where we need to get it. Right now, they're trending not to have deficit spending for this year, okay? But I will tell you, the superintendent's taken some hits for that, because we got really strict on what we were spending our money on. Even with, you know, we had basketball season that just happened. We stopped spending any type of money that was, unless it was raised by gate... You know, they didn't have funds to pay for meals on the road and things like that. So we really got down really tight on what we were spending. And so there, she had to have lots of community meetings communicating that. And so we've tightened up. Yes?
How many, um, possible would be missing in action if you were... I have this count from Earl to the population, what's the question?
I want to say they were down, oh goodness, they were down again, especially with COVID and having to go back and recover. I have to go get, I'm scared I'm going to tell you a wrong number, but I can get that to you. They were, they have trended down. And in our five-year projection, we have accounted for that, of them losing students. At some point, we got to stop the loss of students. They're not below four hundred, but they have lost a few more.
Stacy, what about their federal funds?
So all of these schools right now with federal funds have received the additional ESER money that's coming in, plus they have their title money. A lot of them had carryover. And so as we're really analyzing these budgets, that's what we're looking at. Where can we move folks that were being paid for with their state fundings to federal fundings? And how can we leverage that so that it benefits the district's operating budget? So right now, their federal dollars for additional coaching or supplemental materials, we have that money. It's over on this other side where we're tight. And for Earl specifically, that's part of what got them in trouble in the first place in fiscal distress, is they spent federal funds on things they weren't allowed to and had to pay back.
How is that going? Has that all been paid back, or is that still in progress?
The state covered it, and they make us a monthly payment. So no, at this point, it's not paid back, and that's part of their fiscal distress plan. And when we see they're tight, we're the payment they miss. In fact, we had an audit finding for them not paying, making all their payments back to us. Okay, Lee County, highlights. Again, Lee County is working closely with Solution Tree to improve instructional practices. I have to brag on their elementary school. From the beginning of the year, what we saw with instruction, curriculum, training, to where we are now, huge growth, okay? Laying a really solid foundation that we feel like if we can keep the teachers we have, we'll be able to come in next year and actually maybe start trying to have something to start with, where this year, I feel like we were growing again and trying to get some very foundational pieces there. They have a curriculum. We're seeing consistency from classroom to classroom. Have a really strong Solution Tree coach down to elementary. In fact, Brent Miller, who is in the OCSS office, he sat through a meeting yesterday with one of the Solution Tree coaches, and I think he was more excited than the teachers at Lee County. He called me to tell me all about the things he had learned yesterday. But no, Lee County is enjoying having her there too. But it's that coaching piece and really focusing on instruction. The literacy team from DESI went to Lee County and helped assess every student in the elementary school, has gone in and modeled multiple lessons using the curriculum that Lee County adopted, modeling that curriculum and those lessons and giving very specific guidance about how to deliver instruction using that curriculum. Still have to do some strengthening and some shoring up in the area of math, but we are seeing some literacy improvement as far as our walkthroughs and that type of thing. High school, let me finish going through this list, and then I'll jump to the high school. Operation Lee County, I wish Carly was in the room. Carly Saracini from Teacher Effectiveness took a whole team from Teacher Lysenger to Lee County. They've been there twice. And it's almost like having your insurance meeting where you're sitting down with someone and talking through about all your insurance needs. You know what I'm talking about. We do that every year, don't we? This was doing that with someone from Lysenger. And they were looking at, what is your background? What classes do you have? What are you currently teaching? What else could I get you licensed in? They walked away with seventeen teachers from Lee County having a plan to add additional license to their certificates. I was getting texts from John Hoy saying this was a game changer for that district. Willie Murdock, the superintendent, was bragging. But that's Teacher Effectiveness and the work they did. They went on campus and got personal and talked to people. And they're going to continue to do that support, so very proud of that. And look at that, the very bottom, we've got two A boys, basketball champions out of Lee County. So super excited for them. That's a cultural piece, proud of their district. And we're proud of them for getting through that. As far as continuing to work, we're still concerned about the dyslexia instruction and interventions and the number of students receiving services. So that's an area that we've got to continue to work on. Still need to tighten up on Tier One. So when I talked about PBIS earlier with Earl and having that reward system and knowing for behaviors, in Lee County, that's something we're trying to get in place. We're trying to build that behavioral system and what that looks like. Still have concerns about secondary students being in person, having a hard time getting kids back on campus. The superintendent did come out very strong after Christmas break and basically said, "If you don't have passing grades, you have to be in person." And so again, she herself is having lots of community meetings, lots, talking about the importance of being at school in person, being there for the assessment. But I think Ms. Murdock said it best when she said, "When we gave them permission to stay home, we already had a culture in our district where school wasn't necessarily a priority." And it almost, you know, she said, "Before COVID, we were having to go out and get people, make sure that they got to school on time. We were fighting tardies." And now we've given them permission to stay home, we've got to go back and now pull them back in. And so that's the work they're doing right now. I will say, that very last bullet is something you all need to take note of. In May, we're going to have a hearing on Lee County to keep them, or to recommend to keep them in Level Five support. And this is something the superintendent and I have talked about frequently. The support and the progress that we see with the support of the department, it's happening. It's moving. It's slow. And there's still a lot of work to be done in the district. And so we'll be here next month with that request. They were placed under state authority because of a standards for accreditation violation. They had previous standards of accreditation violations. And last year, they did not complete the ESL testing like they were supposed to do. And so they were placed under authority. So once all of their standards get corrected, they could be returned. They did have, we did go onsite and do a monitoring. They did have two areas that flagged, but could be cleaned up before the end of the year, okay? So they could potentially go back at the end of the year. However, in consultation with the district, there's lots of work to be done, especially in the area of instruction.
And just to clarify, they're not in Level Five right now. But the support they're getting, it's like they are. But y'all have never classified them as in need of Level Five support. And so that's what Ms. Murdock and Ms. Smith have been talking about as far as the need for, to ensure the continuation of that support and building the momentum of the improvements that Stacy's talking about.
And is the request for continuation of Level Five coming from us or coming from?
It is a, it's coming from both sides. We're there weekly. I have people on those campuses and at central office three to four days a week. And so it's, and it's a consistent conversation with the district on how we're supporting, what their needs are. And so this is something Ms. Murdock feels is in need as well and is requesting. requesting.
Stacy, may I ask a question? I'm at NACSS in Earl as well. Are y'all working with them? Will they have that option? Are they applying for the waivers to have the virtual option next year?
Lee County?
Yes.
At this point, I'm not aware of an application that they've put together.
Okay.
So I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware, and I know that in Pine Bluff and Dollarway, they're working with their local co-op for a very limited number of students, not like we had this year. That's a good question. I need to follow back up with my folks on that. Pine Bluff, you know, Pine Bluff started the year with a shortened school day, one o'clock, and then they were doing virtual instruction at the end of the year. They have now extended their school day to a regular day to increase more direct instruction by the teachers and support for the students. We were having a very short abbreviated class schedule, especially in the secondary area, so we felt like this was needed. We do feel like we have our elementary, and we are seeing signs of reading strategies used in the secondary as well. So we feel like we have alignment there. We're having instructional rounds and focus walks, and this has probably been, and this is something that's occurring in several districts, and if we have time and you want to, I may take you into that link there that really kind of talks about what those focus walk tools are, what it looks like, and the data that we get from them. Those are created and personalized by the building principals in the schools on what a building principal wants to see from their teachers when they're walking into the classroom, and then it's a data tool that multiple people are using when they're walking in. Okay? But let me keep going through because I know it's been a long day for you. Right now, there's lots of collaborative work around the salary schedules, and that's part of the annexation plan that we'll get into a little bit more. There has been increased numbers of onsite students at the elementary schools. I think we have one of the elementary schools in Pine Bluff who's about up to 50% of their students returning to on-campus. Where before, if you can remember, Pine Bluff and Dollarway were down like 25% for onsite, and the rest were virtual. So we've got one of those buildings who's back up to about 50%. We still have low numbers at the secondary, and that's still an issue. We've got our written protocols and procedures for the finance department. Last year, Pine Bluff, at their audit, had, remember, like 18 audit findings? And so really trying to strengthen their procedure pieces there. As far as continuing work, things to look at, same kind of conversation that we've had with Earl on what are you offering, how are you paying for your teachers, what does your master schedule look like? And really trying to develop a really tight master schedule that makes sense and making sure we're offering the right courses and that we have kids in those courses. Also trying to create a master schedule that allows for Tier Two intervention during the day, and then making sure that we're addressing students. So when I say Tier Two remediation, okay, meeting individual kids' needs. Making sure that we've got consistency within our curriculum and pacing. There was a conversation I had with Ms. Whitlow this morning, who works for my team there, that sometimes we're spending a lot of time on lessons too long of a time, and so our pacing is off. We're not getting, and I hate to say the word, getting through, but at the same time, we're, and as we were talking about this morning, one of the examples she gave was Hegarty lessons were taken about 30 minutes. So Hegarty is a phonemic awareness program, and it's really only supposed to take about five minutes. It's supposed to be kind of a down and dirty lesson. You do it in five minutes, and you go on, and you come back tomorrow and you do it again. But we have provided a lot of professional development and support to the teachers in delivering that. And so I think it speaks to the fact that they're comfortable with it right now, and they're stretching it out for about 30 minutes. Okay? Because they themselves are comfortable with it, they like it, they know what they're doing now, and so we've just got to shore that up and make sure that we're getting on to the next piece and make sure that flows like it needs to flow. Let me see, other things there. Still have concerns about timely response to the needs of dyslexia within the Pine Bluff School District. This is something that it seems like we've not got it right yet, and we keep talking about it. We spend a lot of the time assessing and screening students before we're getting to the process of providing the services. And so they've been asked to create a summer plan for dyslexia. We've got all these kids identified, we're starting to serve students now, but it's going to be end of the year, and they're going to start next year and start screening again. And so we don't want to do that. We want to start serving kids, we want to have a seamless summer program where they're being served, and we're moving into the fall where they continue to be served. So that's something that we're working on as well. Any questions about Pine Bluff? I'm going to roll right into Dollarway.
Yes, as I continue to think about those students virtual, are there conversations about what grade level progression looks like for the next year? I mean, if you have 75% of your students online, that's very challenging.
So, yeah, so with the, so are you talking about retention? Are you talking about for online learning for next year?
For, no, for students, say kindergarten student or first grade student, moving on to the next grade.
So again, we're at a local level, they're determining who's got the skill set to move on to the next grade. The data for retaining students.
They don't have it.
Yeah. What we need to do instead of retaining a bunch of students, we've got to come up with really robust summer intervention and plans.
And full plans, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we have to do, and so that's one of the things we're working on right now. The district has received a significant amount of federal funds to address learning loss, and so making sure we help support them in creating a really robust plan to do that. But, you know, are there going to be areas of learning loss and academic concerns throughout the grade levels in not only these districts but districts across the state? Yes. So I would hope not to see a large retention. I think, if anything, that's not the, yeah, I think we have to address it through other means.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Dollarway. 95% is the secondary literacy curriculum that they have started implementing. So again, starting to see some of those same literacy interventions happening in our secondary classrooms is a win. We've got kids in secondary reading at a very low level. So if you never go back and address what it was they didn't learn, they're never going to catch up. And this false sense that the only thing you teach secondary kids who can't read is comprehension strategies is false, false, false. You have to go back and you have to address the phonological skills that they do not have, and this program does that at a secondary level. All students in Dollarway are being, have been identified for dyslexia interventions and are being served. The district has increased their capacity with positive behavioral supports, and that's something like Pine Bluff we're starting. So you've got these, you've got these two different groups there. Dollarway also extended their day out to a regular school day at 3:00, and that idea of trying to get kids back on campus and delivering direct instruction is also an area of focus. So moving forward with the annexation piece, they do have an annexation committee, and down at the very bottom, that transition plan, and that transition plan is also linked on your agenda in the quarterly report for Dollarway. Okay? So you can go to that transition plan, and it kind of spells out what we want to do and accomplish in the first 30 days, what we want to get accomplished in 60 and 90. They have had ongoing meetings, not only, they've had like several staff meetings with staff, they've had student meetings where they're meeting with students, they've had meetings with the community, they've had meetings with ADE staff on different departments and what we needed to do for annexation. So it's a very robust plan. I encourage you to click on that and look at it if you want to dig in more on exactly what's happening. Some significant things that have already been told is James Matthew is the elementary school in Dollarway. They have a preschool, but Pine Bluff has a single building, it's called the Forest Park Greenville Building that's preschool. The Dollarway preschool is going to move over and join that single campus preschool. Okay? And then James Matthew is going to become a kindergarten through fifth grade school in the same configurations as the other Pine Bluff schools. So we'll have some grade shifting there. Communication plan about the actions for Dollarway and Pine Bluff, that has been developed and is regularly going out. The transition plan is also available on the website, and staff members in those districts have access to that. Some of the big pieces that we're really working on right now is the staffing analysis. Again, I talk about watching your penny to get your dollars, take care of your dollars. We've done that with Pine Bluff and Dollarway. I mean, we're matching person to person. We're looking at, you know, you've got to take two different complete salary schedules and stipends and moving all that over and what it looks like, what the organizational chart looks like for the district. Those are pieces that we're really, really deep in the weeds right now. All those recommendations will be coming to the commissioner within the next month. Okay, so let me stop about Dollarway, see if you have any questions there. And I want to take you as deep as you want to go. If you want to go into some of the links and look, I will take you there. If you want to explore that on your own and send me questions at other times, you're welcome to do that as well. Okay?
Stacy, I do a question, the pre-K, do they do pre-K three or anything below that? Or is it just pre-K four?
Oh, that's a great question. I know they have three and four-year-olds. I want to say Pine Bluff may actually have some younger, but I would have to go back and look at that.
Okay.
Dollarway does not, though. They're at three and four.
And can any of the ESER funds be used on pre-K?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
On that point, though, just so you know, DACHs in early childhood is receiving a lot of money, too, that hasn't been talked about. So there are funds coming in there for a number of pre-K initiatives as well. So we'll be working with them to make sure we leverage the dollars the most effective way possible.
Okay, Little Rock, so you did not?
Stacy, before you move on, I just wanted to make a comment on your reports in the current section. When they did the reports and they gave the objectives for each month in Earl and in Lee County, at the end of all the objectives, they gave a summary, and that was very helpful because sometimes when I'm not in a system, when I see all these things that are doing, it's hard to know, well, is it being effective? Is it not being effective? You know, really, what does it mean for the district? So that summary, to me, was very helpful.
We'll make sure and include that on the other ones in the future. Thank you. So Little Rock didn't have a legislative update report. Okay? So right now, they had the beginning of a year report, they had their mid-year report, which I've linked on here for you, and it's the same mid-year report that you saw back in December. Okay? Dan, I am going to ask you to click on this link because I think this is important. Please. Not that the other links weren't important, they were all equally important. So this is the report that you saw earlier mid-year. Okay? And so, Dan, if you'll scroll down for me, please, to the first objective. So right here, we saw criteria one. That was their beginning of the year objectives they had to meet, and we scored that. You can see where they had met, 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 and had fours. And then we went to the mid-year, so scroll down a little bit more, and you can see where we scored their mid-year reports, and then go to that third category. So right here is where evidence of end of the year, right there, stop. It's kind of grayscale'd out in the report you received mid-year. So this month, April and May, okay, the district will be providing the evidence that they've met that criteria. All right? And this is where I go back into the district and I do interviews, I do school visits, looking for evidence that this criteria has been met. All right? The only criteria that was not either progressing adequately or met in the mid-year report was the one on budget. So if you'll scroll down a little bit for me, Dan, keep going until you get to the red. There'll be some red on there at some point. Right here. Scroll up a little, right there. So on their budget, they had not met that at the beginning of the year or the mid-year. So they're responsible for submitting a budget to me April this month on their budget. Now, this has to do with deficit spending. Just the same thing with all the other districts we're working in right now. Little Rock, from the very beginning of the year, identified areas in which they can make cuts or do some reductions to get their budget balanced. Okay? Confident that that's what they're doing, and that's what we're going to see when they submit that budget to us in April. Okay? They're also looking at any areas that they had budgetary shortfalls for, and they'll be able to use their federal dollars to address any of those areas that they've possibly had interruption in the continuity of services or a budgetary shortfall. So they do have additional resources there to balance that budget piece out. So I'm expecting to see the budget this month, and it be at a place where we say they're not deficit spending. Okay? But they've not turned that into me yet, but that is something in the month of, this month, in the month of April, I'll be then completing the criteria for those three different areas. And then you guys will have a report from me by June on how they've met this third criteria. Okay? As far as the direct support that's being provided to the Little Rock School District, so the other four districts that we just talked about, again, we're in those districts three to four days a week, boots on the ground, multiple people. Little Rock, that is not the case. Prior to them having a local board, I did have weekly conversations with Dr. Oa, their deputy superintendent, and had weekly conversations generally with Mike Corr regarding different matters. But since their local board, they, we're not reviewing their board reports anymore or their board actions, their local board is taking care of that. I'm there for support for the district as needed. You know, they call me for clarifications. We make sure that they've got somebody who's getting the training they need. If we've got like the digital programming options and training coming up, we made sure that we reached out to the district and included them so that they had someone. But as far as the intensive support, day-to-day operations that we were involved in prior, that's not what's happening with Little Rock. I do have Rocky Malone, who is a principal leadership coach. She does go into Southwest and support that school. Jennifer Barberie's also been over there and provides some direct support to that school because it was a brand-new high school this year, and it merged lots of students and teachers together. But just kind of let you know the support that's being provided there. So it's not the same as the other districts. Okay? Any questions?
Excellent work. Thank you.
All my devices are dead, so that's all of my report.
That's it. Thank you. It's a lot of progress being made, and I know it's a lot of hard work because of your staff and the staff at the schools and the students, so we appreciate all of that. Does anyone have something you want to add or discuss before we adjourn? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. All right, all right. That was quick. Second? All right. Y'all have safe travels.